Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I am Taylor Dyson and I am a senior from Oxon Hill High School. Throughout my four years, I have participated in a number of different things, from modeling, from dancing, from my two weeks of track and my one day of volleyball. But I can say I am pretty experienced in the extracurricular activities area. I enjoy working with children and babies, so that's kind of put me on the path to want to become an OBGYN in the future. Throughout my high school career, I've participated in five AP classes and as of this school year, I have maintained nothing but overall 4.0. But, you know, enough about me. Let's get to the business. I would like to welcome you to the February 25th, 2016 Prince George's County Board of Education meeting. Highlights of this event will include the news break, legislative lessons. Additionally, under the budget consent agenda, the Board of Education will address the fiscal year 2016 Board of Education requested annual operating budget. Please continue to check pgcps.org for upcoming Board Education meetings. And now we will begin the meeting. Thank you.
Good evening, colleagues and fellow citizens. Welcome to the February 25th, 2016 Board Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before we begin, let's give 12th grade Oxon Hill student Taylor Dyson another round of applause. Like so many of our wonderful students, she has headed great places. She told me she was debating now between whether she's headed to Clark Atlanta in Atlanta, Georgia, or Xavier University of New Orleans. Two great choices. Go Xavier. Just my two cents. All right, folks, before we begin, let's ask everyone to again turn off their wireless communication devices as they interfere with the taping of the meeting and begin by asking Ms. Eubanks to please lead the Board in the Board Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policy, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic...
Mrs. Wilson, please call the roll.
Certainly, sir. Good evening, Board members. Good evening. Dr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Burrows.
Here.
Ms. Epps.
Happy to be here.
Ms. Eubanks.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Present.
Ms. Jacobs.
Here.
Ms. Quinteros-Grady.
Here.
Ms. Roach.
Present.
Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Perry.
Present.
Ms. Boston.
Present.
Dr. Eubanks.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, before I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda, a couple of specific notations first. Two additions to the agenda are Item 5.5, a resolution on stop the violence movement that will be presented to you by the Board's Policy Committee, as well as Item 9.2, Board Policy 1600, the establishment of the Office of Ombudsman and Ombudsman Services, and 9.3, Board Policy, Bylaws of the Board Around the Auditor. Each of those changes were made at our last Policy Committee meeting and we wanted to get them to the Board as soon as possible, so they came on a little late. We have removed Item 8.2 from the agenda as a quick background for folks who either were not here. And for the record, we had a public hearing on boundaries on Tuesday and a motion was made to postpone the vote on the boundaries for one year. That motion was seconded. There was some question. I ruled that motion out of order and our parliamentarian ruled that based on the Roberts Rules of Order, that the motion was indeed in order and we voted on that motion. It was subsequently upon review of the Board Bylaws, which as you know supersede Roberts' Rules of Order, that that vote was in all likelihood out of order. But nonetheless, that vote was taken and more important than the fact that it may have been out of order is that the Board's vote was clear about the will of the Board to postpone any vote on boundaries, so that motion is off the agenda today and will not be taken up at this time. So with that, colleagues, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
It's been moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
Ms. Chair.
Ms. Epps.
I just wanted to offer to have non-agenda items to be...
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Agenda items.
I'm sorry, non-agenda items move before agenda items to move up with agenda items. Is there a second on that? Is that a friendly amendment? Is there objection to that being a friendly amendment? Thank you for that. I'm sorry about that. Absolutely. So with that, is that what you...
Mr. Chair, a number of folks tried to call to register but were told that they couldn't register and they're in the audience with statements. I want to make sure they have an opportunity to speak. There was a mix-up with, I'm not sure what the mix-up was, but they called a number and they were told that it was canceled and then someone else was told that there would be no speakers tonight. So there was a lot of confusion about the sign-up list. I got a lot of messages from...
So I'm not sure about that. I know that 31 members got through just fine and so while we are going through those speakers, I'd be glad to have a discussion with my Board Office to see if there was indeed some communication. I've not been informed of any of that, but we did get 31 folks on our speaker who got through just fine.
Okay, some of them are here. Let's see, there's one hand, two hands, three. I just want to, I got a lot of messages about it today.
Okay. Well, I'll check that with the Board and Board Office and see if there was any mix-up in communication. There's none that I was aware of. Okay? So with that, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the emotion, the agenda as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Colleagues, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 4, 2016 Budget Work Session and the FY 2017 Operating Budget Public Hearing, the February 9, 2016 Budget Work Session, and the FY 2017 Budget Operating Public Hearing? If you weren't at one of them and you want to vote, we'll just note that for the record. Anybody care to make a motion? It has been moved and seconded to adopt all of those minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? And we'll make a notation. We'll make sure we note for the record if there were colleagues who were not here to vote on certain of those minutes. All right, my friends, it is now Item 2.6, News Break on Legislative Lessons.
This is their current water pipe and this is what it's supposed to look like. The difference in how clear this one is and how dirty this one is. And that's the water they're drinking and they're bathing with and they're cooking with.
Lead poisoning is irreversible. There's no cure for it. So once they get infected with lead poisoning, there's no turning back. They can try to treat these symptoms, but they will forever be poisoned by the lead.
Proposing that they send letters of concern to Michigan's governor along with bottled water to the citizens of Flint, the student government officers at Oxon Hill High School demonstrated recently that their empathy and concern extend far beyond the school walls and that their voices will be heard.
Most of the students take it upon themselves to get involved because this is a very community-oriented school and we like to help each other.
With agenda items ranging from immigration issues to a new graduation gown policy, to whether an African-American studies course should be restored, the give and take at the SGA meeting showed participatory democracy and Oxon Hill pride at their very best.
I'm a senior here, so I actually went to the old Oxon Hill and I understand where we have come from and how great we've become. This is a great school. I love my school and I want people to be able to see the greatness of Oxon Hill. I don't want people to think that we're more than just the science tech program. We have a great culinary program. We have a great SGA. We have great sports and I want people to be able to see that. And that's why everybody comes together as one in one room, as one student body, is able to discuss topics and make the school a better place.
If Oxon Hill High is a better place, and inarguably it is, much of the credit can go to the student government, whose many accomplishments include pushing to change the school's address to match its mascot.
Everything that we set our minds to do gets done because we are, we're a powerhouse. It's all of us working together to make sure that the students are represented properly and the things that they want get done. So I think we've been very effective.
When we moved to the new school, they wanted something to call our own and so therefore we petitioned the county council if they would rename Felker Avenue to Clipper Way. So they are invested and the engagement that you saw, actually, we do this. This is what we do.
Having tasted political success and aspiring to careers in public service, Oxon Hill's three student government officers took the next logical step. They all went to Annapolis to serve as student pages. Brimming with confidence, they were more than ready to get some ideas to take back home and, if needed, step in for delegates and senators who just might be hearing footsteps.
You seem like a natural politician. Is that something that you're thinking about in the future? Because that skill will take you just about everywhere.
It's a possibility. I'm looking into possibly being a diplomat, going and being an ambassador. I do know for a fact my end goal is to be U.S. Secretary of State. Like, that is the end goal, so...
I think you could probably step in for Mike Bush or Mike Miller for a day. Are you ready to do that if called upon?
I think I am. Sounds fun.
Because when I do meet with all the pages that come here each year, especially the ones that are from my legislative district in Prince George's County, I like to joke and I say, you know, I encourage you to do it at some point, just don't come after my position. But you know, one day, it probably will happen.
In effect since 1970, the Maryland Student Page Program gives high school seniors from across the state the opportunity to serve two non-consecutive weeks during the annual 90-day legislative session. And while the job involves making a lot of coffee, making a lot of copies, and plenty of waiting around, it is also a graduate course on how government really works.
Mostly, they're here, though, to observe the debates, to engage with their delegates and their senators, to go to committee hearings and to really know what the issue is about. Sometimes a page will come up to me and say, "Mrs. Schuterberg, what is that bill about?" And I say, "Well, why don't you print out the bill, read it, and come back to me and tell me what the bill's about."
We're so excited to have them. They're the very best. They're selected by educators, not by politicians. They're good scholars, but they're also active in their schools and they've got good personalities and they mix in well with the members of the Senate and the House. So they help us make the process work.
For Oxon Hill's Naisha Young, the page experience has been a revelation. Politicians, she learned, aren't always partisan and stuffy. Many just want to have fun.
In the House of Delegates, they're so laid back and they laugh and they joke around. They have so much fun and I thought politicians were so strict and like, so they didn't have fun. They don't know how to smile or things of that nature, but it's so laid back and it's so much fun in there. Like, it's like how it's like at school. Everybody's working together, joking around, but come to a compromise at the end.
It is. And it's so funny because the Republicans and the Democrats get along often very well. They can be best friends. You see them coming up and hugging each other on the first day of session and these are people from opposite parties. Often if they work on the same committee, they are really good friends because they work so many hours together.
Learning legislative lessons, like politicians are human beings too, is easy for the pages since they have the run of Annapolis. Thanks to their signature gray blazers, they rarely meet a door that doesn't open.
Tell me about the power of the blazer. Do you feel it?
I do. I love wearing it. I really wish I could take it home.
This blazer kind of gives you a lot of authority, not authority, but a lot of access. You're walking around and people don't really ask you, you know, who you are, where you're going. They see the blazer, it's a page. They don't ask you anything. You can kind of walk around wherever you want to.
And I tell them that on their orientation. I say, "Wear your blazer proudly. When you wear that blazer, people are going to know that you're a page and that means a lot." They'll be walking down the hallways and maybe the governor will stop and talk to them or delegates and senators certainly will talk to them and it opens a lot of doors.
Well, they can go anywhere they want. You know, it's amazing, you know, the governor has functions at the governor's mansion. Like, for example, the last night, the last day of the session, it's kind of open house over there and you see all the pages over there gobbling up the governor's food.
After listening to Delegate Chris Valderrama, an Oxon Hill graduate herself, explain that while most legislators are attorneys, the common denominator is a passion for public service, Paige Naisha found her interest in government wedded even more.
I know that nothing is, nobody ever agrees on everything, but I love to see how people and politicians work together because that's something that I want to do. So I would love to see how our bills are made, how are they, people dissect them and able to really understand like why this is like that and be able to see what's going on because that's something that I want to do when I get older.
Specifically, what do you want to do?
I actually want to work in Congress or in the Supreme Court. I plan on being a political science major and then going to law school.
Knowing that, looking down from high above the House floor, it's not much of a stretch to imagine Naisha Young sitting at one of those desks as a delegate herself, just so she doesn't run against Chris Valderrama. For TV 96 and 38, this is Dave Zera.
All right, so refreshing to know that the young, talented people who are coming through our schools today will be making the decisions that we need them to make for us in Annapolis and on Capitol Hill tomorrow. So thank you for that great report and I will now move on to the report of the chair. I will start, as I often do, remembering those who we lost. Marcus Cicero, Roman philosopher, once opined, "The memory of a life well-spent is eternal." So today I begin by honoring the life and memory of Curtis Bryant Valentine, the father of our colleague and my good friend Curtis Valentine, and Leonard Burley, the grandfather of our colleague and good friend, Mr. Christian Rhodes, who's a Chief Strategic and Internal Affairs Officer. Fellow citizens and friends, please join me in a moment of silence honoring the life and memory of these great men. Every day, great things happen in Prince George's County public schools. I was so pleased and honored to be part of one this week when I got an opportunity to attend the pending ceremony for National Board Certified Teachers. Folks who may not know, National Board Certification represents the pinnacle of the teaching profession and is an honor that is bestowed upon those teachers who can demonstrate the impact that they have on students each and every day. It wasn't too long ago that people felt like a place like Prince George's County isn't the right place to find the best teachers in America or the world. It wasn't too long ago when they said that teachers who teach high-need kids and who teach kids of color and to teach in our neediest communities can't really make it to the top. Prince George's County proved them dramatically wrong. When we started our efforts on National Board Certification, Dr. Doug Anthony was one of the leaders of that movement several years ago and in a relatively short amount of time, we went from no National Board teachers to fifth in the state now in the number of National Board Certified Teachers that we produce every day. Those teachers spread their brilliance and their excellence to other educators and to students each and every day, proving that we know that excellence in teaching makes a great difference. Our colleagues in Prince George's County Education Association, which is a co-leader in that effort and sponsors our pending ceremonies each year, thank you for your support of our great teachers. I also want to acknowledge, is Ms. Audrey Rappaport here? All right. Audrey Rappaport is a freshman at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. Good evening, Audrey. How are you? So, you know, our young folks have strong opinions and Audrey decided it's time for me to express mine in the right way. And she wrote a letter that was published in the Washington Post recently about what kinds of things that college admissions officers ought to pay attention to. And she talked about the fact that while so many of our students are engaged in so many extracurricular activities, that that is something that not, many of our students don't have the time or the capacity to do or their families don't have the capacity to give that to them and colleges are judging folks unfairly. I'm going to read the end of your article if I may. She talks about all of this. She says that about all of these other curriculums, "They are draining my time and my family's time. There are many students like me whose families struggle to be able to afford the time and money to allow their child to participate in after-school activities. The practice of selecting the most well-rounded individual is classist. I enjoy the activities I participate in and I'm grateful that I'm able to do them, but poor families can't afford things like private lessons, sports clubs, and so on." And she goes on to say, "As a freshman in high school who has been a student not getting enough sleep due to activities and whose family has struggled to find a way to pick me up in my after-school activities, I ask colleges to stop the pointless tradition and start looking at what really counts, your level of achievement in the field you plan to major in and not how well you do at any other extracurricular activity." That, my friends, is a strong and articulate position. Thank you for pointing it out. Let's give her a big round of applause. She might be on Capitol Hill pretty soon, too, with that kind of, with that kind of... Thank you for that participation. Finally, to wrap up my report, it gives me great joy and honor to officially welcome Mary Kingston Roach, our newest at-large Board Member to the Prince George's County Board of Education. Ms. Roach brings a wealth of experience and passion for the work we do to advance student achievement in Prince George's County public schools. I think it's worth noting, as we continue to round off the skills, knowledge, and expertise, Ms. Roach works for a wonderful organization called IELT, the Institute for Education Leadership, and she's one of the most prominent national experts on the development of community schools. So that knowledge and that expertise is going to mean so much to us as a Board and to the school system. Welcome, Ms. Roach. Please, if you want to say a couple of words.
Thank you for the warm welcome. I'm really honored to serve and especially on behalf of all of our kids and families in the county. As an at-large member, I support the whole county and advancing excellence for us and just am so inspired by videos like this where we see that our young people really are leaders and all we need to do is to keep nurturing that, so, and giving them these opportunities. So thank you for this opportunity to help us all get there together.
All right. Thank you and welcome. Couple of other closing announcements. March 10, we have a Board Work Session at 5:00 p.m. March 22 is our next Board Meeting at 7:00 p.m. And April 14 is our 1:00 p.m. Board Work Session. All those meetings will be here at the Sasser Building. If you're interested in speaking at any of those meetings, please register with the Board Office two and a half hours prior to the meeting by calling 301-952-6115. That concludes my chair's report and I will now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for the Chief Executive Officer's report.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Good evening. I'm proud to announce that on February 17, Oxon Hill Middle School teacher Angela Malone was presented with the prestigious Milken Educator Award. Ms. Malone is a Science Department Chair and teaches honors science to 7th and 8th grade students. She was presented with a cash prize of $25,000 by Dr. Jane Foley, Senior Vice President of the Milken Educator Awards. It is important to note that Ms. Malone is the only educator in the state of Maryland to receive this honor this year and I believe one of only 40 in the United States of America and so we are indeed being well-recognized. With a heightened focus on increasing the number of students walking across the stage and receiving their high school diplomas, we have continued to make significant progress. In 2014, our graduation rate increased 2.47 percent. On the heels of that impressive gain, MSD announced, I think about almost two weeks ago, that our 2015 graduation rate increased again by 2.16 percent to almost 79 percent, the highest percentage on record in Prince George's County public schools since the cohort measurement model has been in place. This represents a 4.3 percent county increase since I became the CEO in Prince George's County and I want to thank my team for their work in that as well. I'd also like to mention Fairmont Heights and Potomac High Schools, both with over a 13 percent increase in graduation last year. Oxon Hill High School with nearly 8 percent and Sutland with almost 7 percent and we had an additional six other high schools who increased between 3 and 6.5 percent. Congratulations to our two finalists for the annual Washington Post Educator Awards. Dr. Kathy Andrews, Principal of the Academy of Health Sciences at Prince George's Community College, was selected as our district's finalist for the Washington Post Principal of the Year Award and William Moulden, a 38-year veteran science teacher at Samuel Ogles Middle School, has been selected as our finalist for the Washington Post Teacher of the Year Award. Both will go on to compete with finalists from across the Washington area for prestigious awards. We wish them both the best of luck. And finally, I attended the Celebrating Gifted and Talented Education in Maryland event last evening. We have three new EGATE, Gifted and Talented Education Schools, of the six in the state of Maryland. They include Calverton Elementary School, University Park Elementary School, and Kenmore Middle School. We now have a total of 14 EGATE schools out of the 39 in the state of Maryland. Calverton Elementary School is our first Title I EGATE school and Kenmore Middle School was our first EGATE school and our first school to recertify as an EGATE school. We are very proud of our winners and the work that our employees are doing. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, great things are happening every day here in Prince George's County public schools. I will now yield the floor to Associate General Counsel Demetria Tobias for the legislative report.
Happy Almost Friday. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening. You have a copy of my legislative report. There is a lot of information in there, so I will not go through a lot of detail. I will just be available for questions if you have any after this overview. The written report includes updates on the county delegation, state budget and policy information, local bills update, copies of the testimony that we've submitted on the Board's behalf as of last Friday, and finally, some statewide bill... board's behalf as of last Friday, and finally, some statewide bill highlights. Just as a reminder, we... There are a lot of bills that are that are still pending in the General Assembly. I think this is a record number of almost 2,700 bills that have been filed. But the crossover date, the date by which any bill that one house intends to pass favorably is approaching in mid-March. And so that's really a big date that we watch because a lot of these bills are going to die or going to stay in someone's drawer. So when crossover comes and we see which bills are really getting traction and and being heard in opposite houses, we will provide you with a more comprehensive list of the bills that have made it and some updates on those as well. I did want to provide you though with two things, a couple of updates on bills heard this week and a couple of highlights of things that are coming on next week. Two bills that we supported this week that would actually provide essential and important funding for our school system are House Bill 722 and Senate Bill 461. House Bill 722 would establish a capital grant program for local school systems that have had significant enrollment growth or which use a significant number of relocatable classrooms or portables. Obviously, we do. We, I think we use on average between 400 and 500, there's some number in there, of portables due to space issues at several of our schools. Montgomery County is another jurisdiction that uses a lot. And so Sarah Woodhead, the Director of our Capital Program, came and testified on behalf of the school system in support of that bill, which would provide some needed funding to help provide a kind of to put a dent in the significant backlog that we have on capital improvement needs. So I did want to highlight that and to thank her for that testimony. Also, we were very pleased to testify in support of Senate Bill 461. Dr. Sean Joseph testified on behalf of Dr. Maxwell's behalf and the school system's behalf. This is the pre-K funding bill. And if you recall, this is a major initiative of MABs, PASM, ACLU. It enjoys broad organizational support among many stakeholders. But what this bill would do would be to provide state funding for the pre-K kids that we're already serving, actual dollars. So just as a reminder, under state law, we are providing at least half-day pre-kindergarten services to economically disadvantaged children, but those children are not accounted in our enrollment counts. We do not get direct kind of one-to-one funding for, you know, full-time students or half funding for for those who are here half-day. And based on our budget team's projections, this could mean a difference for us in the ballpark of between 20 and 30 million dollars. So that's real money that could obviously help us to not just enhance the existing program, but to look at all kind of options to be able to expand pre-K in in our county. So that's a big one for us and and we certainly wanted to show up and testify in support of that. So we did that. We did that this week in the Senate and will also do so the first week in March in the House. And then lastly, coming up next week, I just wanted to highlight two bills for you, just to let you know that we're going to be lending our full support behind these as well. The first, you probably saw MAB's call to action on this. This is the bill that establishes a Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Education, or also known as Thornton II. And what this does is, if you recall, MSD is in the process of working with contractors that are looking at the adequacy funding in the state, taking a doing a deep dive, taking a look all across categories in terms of how that funding needs to be updated, expanded, made more equitable for all jurisdictions in the state. And what this bill would do, it would create a group, legislative leaders, educators, local government stakeholders, business leaders, and that group would take a look at the final the final report from the adequacy study and come up with a list of statutory recommendations on how to change the funding formula in the law. This was the same process that the state went through with the initial Thornton Commission. And so MAB has been doing a big push to get another group like this set up so that you have a cross-representation looking at what the needs are statewide. So we will certainly be testifying in support of that bill. That's going to be heard in the Senate on Tuesday. And then lastly, there's another bill that we that we're very excited to hopefully apply for if it passes. This would provide state grant money for us to be able to expand dual enrollment options. This is the PTech bill. PTech stands for Pathways in Technology Early College High. And really, what it is, is it's similar to the middle college program that we already have that's working very well in our county. I think we it's an historic program for Prince George's in the state. And in the middle college program, students have an opportunity to simultaneously earn the credits needed towards a high school diploma and also their associate's degree. And so they're on a college campus and they can graduate with, and they did, they have. Our first graduating class, I think graduated last spring, they have graduated with both a high school diploma and an associate's degree. Awesome opportunity. And so what this kind of bill would do, the state would provide grant funding to expand that. And so the focus for these kids or these schools, and it could be a school within a school, you know, doesn't require a whole new, you know, brick and mortar building, but the children in this program have an opportunity to both work towards their high school diploma, work towards the associate's degree, and get industry experience. The piece here is they're really focusing on giving them real-world, you know, relevant professional experience. So whether or not they choose to graduate and go on to a four-year institution, or they choose to take that that experience and go into industry, they've got something, you know, relevant and valuable to work with. So we're really excited about that bill and and obviously would be one of the first systems in line to apply for that grant funding. I think those are the two major ones that I wanted to highlight for you next week. The Policy Committee is scheduled to meet on Thursday and we're going to have a list of bills for their consideration there as well. But I'll stop there and be available to answer any questions that you may have about the report.
Thank you for that report. Questions, Ms. Jacobs? Oh, that was... Nope, okay. Any questions about the report? All right. I don't think we have any questions. Your report was very thorough and I look forward to seeing you again at the Policy Committee and back here as things continue to develop.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll now move on to item 3.1, which is Public Comment on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items. We have three registered speaker, three speakers speaking on an agenda item and 28 registered speakers speaking on a non-agenda item. Please, a show of hands, who actually called somebody today to register to speak that did not get registered? Actually called and did not get registered to speak? If you did that, I see at least one hand raised up. The Board Executive Director who's up front here, I'm going to ask her to register you and we'll put you on the list to speak. If you called and got through some confusion, as I understand, when you called for, when you called this week for the hearing, you called the Pupil Accounting Office. And when you called to register here to speak at this public meeting, you called our board office. So while we think things went pretty smoothly with that, there could have been a hiccup here or there. So again, if you did that, please do register. Give Ms. Berry here the name up front so I can make sure to call you appropriately. And with that, we will start with our process. Again, let me just review the guidelines for you. You have been registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The board will not address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation. At the sound of the buzzer, speakers may complete that sentence only. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. You will be warned only once, and if you continue, your comments will be terminated and you may be asked to leave the meeting. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, principal, superintendent, assistant superintendent, et cetera. Please leave a copy of your statement in the file box located next to the microphone. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to move smoothly. Thank you very much. As always, we want and need your participation in the process and we welcome it. So let's get started with public comments. Speakers on Agenda Item 6.4, the FY 2017 Board of Education Requested Annual Operating Budget. Our first speaker is Donna Young.
Good evening. My name is Donna Young and I want to thank you for an opportunity to speak today. Last year, I asked several questions at the Board, the Budget Hearing Meeting that, as of today, has yet to go addressed. These questions centered around the, what I believe to be waste and fraud in our system and how we correct that before we decide to ask for increases in our budget. At the Budget Hearing on February 9, which has yet to be posted, I addressed significant increases in the administration at the SASSA building. In other words, we went from 10 individuals to chiefs, 21 chiefs, deputy chiefs, associate chiefs, associate superintendent, chiefs of chiefs, and the list just went on. The bottom line is that we have all of these executives and we don't see where any of this increase has gone to the school system. The audit performed by the state reveals several areas of waste and although not identified exactly as fraud, it was in fact fraud. For example, in the Transportation Department, three individuals had 203 hours of overtime without any documentation to support that the hours were actually worked. Being inside of this system, I know that there are a lot of hits that are turned, you know, we ignore things and and we're, and still fears instill to keep us from speaking. But I'm very concerned because in Dr. Maxwell's transition report, he indicated something that was supposed to be focused on the children. And that is that we were going to increase the organizational structures and effectiveness to go back to teaching and learning. So can someone please tell me how in fact, with all of the increase in SASSA, we are still, our SAT scores from 2000, in 2015, since 2013 to 2015, reading has gone from 433 to 405, math has gone from 422 to 397, and our writing has gone from 418 to 393 with all of the heavy overhead at SASSA. And I'd also like to ask a couple of questions. $22 million in competitive bids were not under contract in this report. What have we done about it? $1 million in overpayment of employees, what have we done about it? $1.4 million in write-offs, what have we done about it? $2.4 million in excessive sick leave donations, what have we done about it? And what have we done about all of the information that was provided to us, which shows that our transportation budget has increased every single year by tens of million dollars? Tell me, what are we doing about it? Repeal HB 1107.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kimberly Williams.
I do believe there was an error. I did register, but I registered under the non-agenda items as a parent to speak about the closure of Skyline, not to speak about the budget.
You're up here. Go for it.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tuesday, I was here and I gave a testimony on what my son with autism would say, if he could, about the closure of Skyline Elementary. And I'm sure that he would tell you not to close it for the following reasons. Because he needs the following to function and to learn. First, and most importantly, he needs a special education teacher because they have the skills, experience, and compassion to help me. They know when I need movement breaks or sensory input and they know when to push and when to back back based on my body language. Second, I need a small classroom because I need individual attention. Having a smaller classroom makes it harder for me to space out and lose attention, which I have a tendency of doing. Third, I need visual aids and structure because it's predictable and relieve stress, which will help me to reduce my stemming. And fourthly, my IEP drafted by my special education professional says I'm not ready for the general education. In fact, 100% of my IEP states that my education should be in special education, in a closed, contained classroom, which to my understanding must be implemented. Now, as a mother at Skyline Elementary, according to the CDC, 1 in 68 children have autism and there's 1 in 48 in boys. So that means for every 68 children that enrolls in Prince George's County Community and Schools, six, one, at minimum, one will have autism, and this is constantly growing. And all kids are not the same under this umbrella. As a matter of fact, your PowerPoint says that the number of self-contained special education classes exceed the number of general education classes. So the data is there. Proposing to send them to general education is sending a message that you don't acknowledge their unique needs and you don't want to help and properly educate them and the statistics don't exist. That data is out there and you're going in the wrong direction by closing Skyline Elementary. You don't shut off resources when the need is growing. The purpose of an autism program is to educate children separately who cannot function in the general population. So what sense does it make to place them in a setting where they can't learn and function? My question is, do you honestly expect to have a success story when you have 20 or 25 kids in a class, which is already strenuous on the general education teacher, and then add a child with autism with sensory needs to the class? These neighborhood schools are not able or ready to educate them and you can't learn autism one-on-one in six months.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is LaShawn Jackson.
Mr. Chair, she's listed under Agenda Items, but she was not an Agenda Speaker. Could we move her back? I thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Non-Agenda Items. Kamaya Tillerson.
My name is Kamaya Tillerson and I am a current Prince George's County Public School student. I am concerned about the issues in the southern part of the county because it hurt me to hear all of the sad stories that these students are facing. As a middle school student in the northern part of the county, I can honestly say there's a big difference. We have Apple Map books and the latest technology, while the southern school didn't even have enough books for all of us. Teachers had to make copies of the pages so that we could do our homework. Why is that? I went to Panorama Elementary School. We had so much success with our neighborhood program, so the Lieutenant Governor, the County Executive, the CEO, and other leaders came to our ribbon cutting ceremony. During this ceremony, when the CEO spoke, it made me feel like I was important. I look up to the CEO as a leader. Please don't let me down. You spoke highly of the school and seemed to be sincere. If you are sincere, please be thanked to propose to consolidate and close these schools. From the meeting on Tuesday, it sounded like it would hurt all communities and especially the children. Hearing the parents talk about their children with autism, being forced to go to the neighborhood school without any resources was heartfelt. My elementary school, it... My elementary school has the only regional special needs program in the county. So I know firsthand how these special needs children really are. I love interacting with them, especially when they learn how to say my name. Do you realize how hard it would be for these children in a regular classroom? The CEO and board, please do what you can to protect these children. Forestville High School is a small, small community college, I mean, community school that had only, the only military academy in the state. that had only, the only military academy in the state. Why would you take out such a promising program? The students have worked hard to obtain ranks and will lose them if their school is closed. As a child, we are taught to work hard, be respectful, and always do your best. These children are example of doing the right things. Now they, they are relying on you to do the right things by them. The CEO and board, I'm asking you, that you work with all of us to come up with a strategy to keep these schools open. I know that this can be done if we all work together. I'm willing to play a part in the success of this part of the county, so that these students are successful. I hope I can count on you all to do the same. I know you might be wondering why I'm so concerned, but I am a child, and I believe that you should stand up for what's right. Besides, I, I want to graduate as a Forestville Knight. Thank you.
Our next speaker, and I'll warn folks a little bit in advance, I'll give a couple of names, will be Julie Holness, followed by Sherlene Bruni and Kenneth Smith. Julie Holness.
Good evening. Take two. So I told you last time about how, here I am thirty-something odd years later, as opposed to driving a bus somewhere. So, it, was standing up, I'm standing up for, fighting for Forestville High School. So I'm gonna read this this time. I believe that bigger's not always better. Forestville may be a small school, but we do serve our purpose. The image that most people have of us is not accurate. Many people who come through Forestville are surprised at how good we are. All schools have their problems. They also have their successes. We have had two Gates Millennium Scholars attend Forestville, and I think that the size of the school inspired the second one to go for the scholarship. She may not have pursued it at a bigger school. Our girls' basketball team won the state championships last year, and is currently number seven in the, in the country. And by the way, they, they won last night as well, for the county championships. Our girls' volleyball team won the one-A, two-A, three-A county championship this year. Our football team won the one-A regional championships this year. We have record-breaking track stars, that, actually in the record books, even when we had a condemned track. We've had many banners, trophies showcasing our students' sports prowess. Now, our drill team has been number one in the tri-state area for inspection slash academics in over fifteen years, from what I understand. Schools come from as far away as Chicago to attend our drill meets, which is one of the biggest in the area. From what I understand, they have to turn schools away. And by academics, that means academics, we're not talking sports here. And we have many trophies to show for what we've done for the drill team. In addition to our famous athletes and entertainers, of which I've taught several, we've had Westport, West Point attendees. One graduated, one is, I believe, a sophomore this year, a county council member. Even have one of Prince George's County's renowned assistant principals, who's now a principal, graduate from Forestville. I believe the size of our school inspires students who would disappear in a larger setting, get involved in activities that they would not normally do. The smaller setting also allows teachers to get to know students better. I have, of course, had alumni stop by and reminisce about their time spent in my classes. But I've also had students that I have never taught stop by to visit me and laugh about how I would get on them, about getting to class on time or getting decent grades, and the difference that it made. So with the smaller hallways and what have you, we can reach more students, or I can, because I'm a little bit out there. Any case, in summary, I pray that the boundaries for Forestville remain the same, so that we can continue to nurture our students in our small setting. We have done so much with so little over the past thirty-four years. I pray that we can continue, because big things do come in small factories.
Thank you. Thank you. I heard, I have Sherlene Bruni, Kenneth Smith, and Sharon Sims. Sherlene Bruni here. How about Kenneth Smith?
Superintendent Maxwell, this is to you, this is to you. I want to say, on behalf of Forestville closing too, as a parent and have a child and for all the kids, notice that when we first started out, we saluted our flag and said justice for all. We look at the justice for what we're doing for our kids. There is a solution, and you have that power to do that. And my thing is, to you, is, look at what you're doing, look at the hurt. I wish you had have been here Tuesday night. I really wish you had have been here Tuesday night, to see the hurting, the cry-out that the parents and even the students had, out of the mouth of a babe. You getting it? When we hurt our kids, and then we turn around and want them to do something, and life, each and every one of you have an education, it's time that we give them that. I sit here and just heard about money. We always talking about money. We have a solution, let's do something. Regardless of how I feel or you feel about me, we get past those. It's time that we do something for our kids, and I, my plea is to you. You are the coach, you are the one, as the Denver Broncos won the Super Bowl, you are the coach for this. You can do this. And like they say, there's an election time coming. We vote you in, we can vote you out, but we shouldn't have to get to that point. We should be able to work a solution. There's money. Again, I say, what happened to all this casino money? They tell me about the casino not being built, but that's not what the commercial said. The commercial said money to the Prince George's County Schools. Maybe I lost something somewhere, but this is what I'm saying. There is a solution, and you are the solution for this. We can't hurt our kids. We talk about letting them be our future. That's that. You just showed a video showing the future. Let's, let's do something. Let's not hurt them. Let's not close the school. You say a small boundary? Let's do something. Let's work to see how we can improve it, to make, make the boundary larger, to support more kids coming in. Let's do something. I, I'm pleading with you. Let's do something. If I had to quit my job of thirty-eight years, I would do that if it will help them. Thank you. And unfortunately, I can't bring it, give it to you, because it comes from the heart. If I can take it out, I just did it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Sims, followed by Catherine McKelney, McKenny, and Kira Barker.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me again. I come before you, again, about Forestville, but what I want to speak about first is our county. I love that we are increasing in our graduation rates. I have to include that last year, Forestville Military Academy, Forestville High School, ranked second in our county for improved graduation rates. And as I write to you and then I address you, I always use Forestville Military Academy first, and I think a lot of you understand that, because eighty percent of our population is in that program. I've listened to testimonies from my neighboring communities, and they're compelling, especially the ADA. We have a close by jurisdiction that just finished a ten-year litigation in reference to that, imposing these children into situations that they cannot function. So I ask you to look at that again, because we need to keep our money in our schools and not on lawsuits. Now with that said, all of us come to the table with what we want, but we have to work with what we can do. And in situations, all of us have different ideas. But I want to give you a little background on Forestville. I've come to the table in the last two years with different scenarios. Our structure was changed, our program was changed, but our boundaries were not changed. So we did not have an increase from another area. We had situations within our walls that deterred parents from coming to us, and that was a crime. Now with that said, we've opened our doors to share with several programs, and we've asked for several programs. The IT programs, that are still sitting on the books with three million-plus dollars, we asked for that to come to our house. We invited, when there was turmoil in this county, where to put the international school. We came and said, send them to our house, we will welcome them, because we have ESOL students already that we are servicing within our walls. So with that said, we have presented so many different options, and we have not gotten any replies. What we have gotten is turmoil within our walls, where I had to send you an email that was called "State of Emergency." We should not have "State of Emergency" in any of our schools. Thank you.
Next up is Catherine McKelhenny. Sorry about that pronunciation.
It's not phonetic. Good evening, all. I stand with these parents, students, and staff, and it is inspiring to hear from so many of you on the very serious subject of consolidation. That mine will be a break from the, the very serious detriment of consolidation, to speak for a moment on play. I come to you as a parent of a PG CPS kindergartner, who is dismayed to learn in September that my student was only getting fifteen minutes of play a day, for a five-year-old. These fifteen minutes included time to dress, time to line up, and relocate outside to the playground. And for those of you who can remember having a five-year-old, that can take a lot of time. So I created a petition and present it to you tonight, that PG CPS should extend the current minimum recess time from fifteen minutes to twenty minutes. This petition has garnered over six hundred signatures. In doing so, I have not spoken to one parent that does not agree that this should be extended. The most frequent comment, which I've included with the petition, was that it should be extended further than twenty minutes. In a two thousand thirteen policy statement from the American Academy of Pediatrics, they wrote that the crucial, about the crucial role of recess as an essential planned respite from rigorous cognitive tasks, and that's what we're hoping these students are doing in the classroom. The academy does not recommend a specific number of minutes for daily recess. However, its policy statement notes that across the nation, the length specified for recess ranges widely, from twenty to sixty minutes per day, suggesting that a fifteen-minute recess is wildly outside the norm, on the low end, of course. For purposes of comparison, Montgomery County requires that recess for elementary school students be between twenty and thirty minutes. Anna Rundle County provides at least twenty minutes per day. Fairfax County Elementary Schools requires recess be at least twenty minutes per day. DC Public Schools allows for a minimum of twenty minutes per day recess in elementary school. And Howard County Elementary School has thirty-minute minimum recess. So I am here to voice my concern about the current county policy, and urge you to increase the minimum recess length for Prince George's Elementary School students. These additional five minutes would increase the current time by thirty-three percent, and this, these five minutes, or would be a thirty-three percent increase over the current length. These five minutes would make an important difference. Thank you for your attention, and I hope to see this on the policy agenda soon.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kira Barker, followed by Sarah Christopherson.
Good evening. I'm Kira Barker. I have a second grader and a rising kindergartner at Dora Kennedy French Immersion School in Greenbelt, and I am a resident of Chevrolet, Maryland. I'm also here to talk about recess. As Catherine pointed out, PG County Public Schools currently has the shortest amount of allotted recess time of any of the surrounding counties. The American Association of Pediatrics, in their report, also stated that safe and properly supervised recess offers children cognitive, physical, emotional, and social benefits. It should be used as a complement to physical education classes, not a substitute. And whether it's spent indoors or outdoors, recess should provide free unstructured play or activity. The AAP recommends that recess should never be withheld as punishment, and that minimizing or eliminating recess can negatively affect academic achievement. There are numerous studies from around the world that support the importance of recess. In Finland, which is one of the top-scoring school systems in the world, they have a ten-to-fifteen-minute break at the end of every hour. This year in Fort Worth, there have been numerous reports from four schools in Fort Worth that have participated in a program sponsored by TCU, that increased their recess time by, by three times, from twenty minutes a day to an hour a day, split into four fifteen-minute periods of recess, two in the morning, two in the afternoon. At first, the teachers expressed some concern that they would not be able to cover all of the same curriculum that they were required to cover, but what the teachers have found over the course of the year is that the students are now able to accomplish that same curriculum in less time, because with the increase of recess, during their classroom time, the students are now more focused, more independent, more able to retain what they're learning. They have overall academic improvement, they have better social skills, and demonstrate increased creativity, and there are fewer discipline problems, fewer absences, and they are still covering just as much material. This program is called the LINK Project. I'm including information for that in my paperwork that I will leave with you, and I encourage you to look it up. There are other studies included here that also suggest that diagnoses of ADHD and other attention diagnoses could stem from a lack of motion in developing muscles in school-aged children. So I am coming to you today, as a concerned parent. My children attend school on middle school hours, because Dora Kennedy is a K-through-eight school. My little girl, that's about to go from four hours a day at a preschool to an eight-hour day, when you include the bus hour, the bus ride, and the six-and-a-half hours of school day, is gonna have only fifteen minutes of playtime, and it's just gonna be really, really difficult for her. I've seen other kids struggling in this, both at our local community elementary school and at the French Immersion School. So I am asking this board to please consider three points. One, to reinforce the current policy that recess never be taken away as a punishment, and that recess time is never used for testing, assessments, or schoolwork. Two, that they will vote to approve the petition to increase the length of recess. And three, that they will add recess for middle school and a second recess for the elementary schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Sarah Christopherson, Michael Taylor, Hazel Shakur, Shakur, and Kimberly Harley.
My name is Sarah Christopherson. My seven-year-old is a first grader at Thomas Stone Elementary in Mount Rainier, and my four-year-old will be joining him next year. I have a decade of working for Congress, including in education policy, and so I know that the school board is constrained by what federal and state policymakers do. I'm not unsympathetic with that. But I also know, both as a parent and a policy staffer, that fifteen minutes of recess is just not enough for little bodies and minds. As a parent, I see this up close. At home, we literally have a little trampoline, an old used trampoline, in the living room, so that our two boys can, quote, "jump and think," which they tell me they need to do. They're not hyperactive, they're just little boys. Little boys, little girls, need to move. As a policy staffer, I know that scientific literature here is pretty clear. Kids need recess, period. A couple of folks preceding me have talked about this. They need unstructured playtime, where they can learn social skills, they can cultivate creativity. PE classes are important, although PE classes, frankly, have also been cut way back, but PE classes don't get to that same need for unstructured creative playtime. But PE classes don't get to that same need for unstructured creative playtime. I'll just quote you one study, there are a lot of them, but a 2009 study of over ten-thousand eight-to-nine-year-olds found that having one or more daily recess periods of greater than fifteen minutes was associated with better behavioral outcomes. And we see the same happening in academic outcomes, too. Much as my previous woman mentioned, when these kids have breaks, they're actually better focused, and the outcome, the academic outcomes improved. There's a well-established, well-documented physiological limit to what our brains can handle. We see this in working adults, we see this in school kids. One thing I want to note, my son's school is two-thirds Latino and a third African-American. And when you look at the statistics of who gets access to recess, overwhelmingly, it's white, middle-class kids. They get lots and lots and lots of recess time. When you look at who doesn't get access to recess, it's children of color. And in my school, where they face language barriers, documentation barriers, to take recess and just pull it way back is just one more barrier that's holding these kids back from real success. So as you look at, as you weigh this, I just urge the board to please consider significantly expanding recess time, adding additional recess periods. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Michael Taylor, followed by Hazel Shakur and Kimberly Harley.
I'm Michael Taylor, and here to address you about the closing of Skyline, because my son has autism and he does attend the autism program there. Oh, sorry, I'm a little tall. I'm here to discuss the fact my son, Colin, has autism and the plans to close, although have been postponed, which I do appreciate, Skyline Elementary School. I do not envy what you are going through right now, having to listen to all these emotional responses. But please remember, these emotional responses are largely fueled by the fact that we haven't seen any plans. And when we received a letter that indicated that this was going to happen, I received the letter approximately two weeks prior to the first hearing. And in that letter, it was dated February 3rd, not even three weeks prior to the first hearing. I was told in that letter that the plans would start being discussed after the initial vote. That doesn't make any sense. I wouldn't quit a job and then look for another job. I'd probably try to find another job first. Okay? We feel betrayed, or at least I do, I don't want to speak for other parents, but I feel betrayed. I don't like feeling hopeless, but if you work with us, we will work with you. Skyline has earned my trust. You have made this an adversarial relationship. This is why I contacted the governor, the senate, and the state senate, and the congress for both. I will continue to fight. This is what I do. I've been in the Navy seventeen years, and I will continue to fight. Please understand, just like all the other parents, I have a kid with special needs, who has a lot of problems, needs small classrooms, you're going to hear all about that from a lot of parents, and it's very true. But in addition to that, my son's coping mechanism and how we found out he has autism is he centers himself by hurting himself. Please do not put him in a position where he may hurt himself again. Now, we have taught him other coping techniques, but he's a nine-year-old boy with autism. This is a serious thing. This is a health issue. Please work with us. Now, I will continue to trust Skyline personnel. They have been nothing but supportive, and have worked with us with open honesty. In addition to that, being in the Navy, I can move away from this situation, and the government will pay for it. Okay? Other people do not have that option. And when I moved here, I was warned against going to Prince George's County, but I did my research, and it appeared to be one of the best places for my son. Prince George's County has built a system where their local schools cannot handle and are not designed to handle autism-spectrum students of the severity that go to Skyline. Which is great, it's created a great program, but if you're going to reverse it so quickly, please understand, your schools are not prepared. We have already tried that, and we have spoken to the faculty at our local school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Hazel Shakur, followed by Kimberly Harley and LaShayla Clark.
Good evening. Thank you, board members and Dr. Maxwell, for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight on an issue of proposed rezoning. I know it's not currently on the agenda, but we were informed and warned that perhaps it might end up back on the agenda, because it's a matter that is very visible and, and really determined to potentially save a lot of money for the county, and I know that's of great importance to you and to us, too. I don't have a prepared speak, speech, but I do have a series of questions. Why does Prince George's County spend the most per child for education, yet arguably, we perhaps provide our children with the worst education in the state of Maryland? Why are we considering two new schools totaling eighty-three million in the northern part of the county, while on Tuesday, parents and concerned citizens of the southern part of the county beg, struggle, and fight to keep our schools open and to keep our students within our neighborhood and community? Why is it a good idea to make our children stand at a bus stop at 6:30 in the morning, which means a 5:00 AM wake-up time in the morning, when it's dark and cold, and the ride takes about thirty minutes, to go away from the community to go to school? Why have we not considered how the physical stress and the lack of sleep, and possibly lack of nutrition in the morning, impacts our children's ability to learn? Why do we think it will be safe for our children to be out at a bus stop or walking to a bus stop at 6:30 in the morning, in the middle of winter? Or do we plan to send our children to the bus stop with reflective gear, so that perhaps they don't get hit by oncoming traffic in the, in the wee hours of the morning? Why would anyone in their right mind bus their child to a school whose sixth-grade English Literacy Park score is one-hundred-and-fifty-six, when their neighborhood school has a score of two-hundred-and-fifty-six? Why would the county invest in consultants who don't bother to speak with parents and administrators of the schools that are going to be impacted by their recommendations? And why would the board attempt to gain feedback and ideas two months before a vote is scheduled to be made on the very, very important issues of school rezoning and school closures? Why would I buy a home expecting my child will go to a high-performing school, or, or go to a school that allows them to, to handle their struggles with autism, and pay the property taxes that we pay in this county? And be okay when you guys decide, "Oh, you know, that's not going to happen anymore for you. We're going to rezone, we're going to close schools, deal with it." Why did I anguish over voting for a casino in Prince George's County, but decided to vote yes, thinking that perhaps that money would come to us into, to schools to help our children? I leave you with this, our kids deserve better.
Kimberly Harley, then LaShayla Clark, and Ladonna Dingell.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Harley, and I am an alumni at Forestville High School and a Prince George's County resident. It's disturbing to me that school officials at Forestville High School have already been ordered to pack up their records, but the vote hasn't taken place yet. But since the boundary change vote has been postponed for one year, I assume that instruction has been rescinded. Although the school boundaries agenda item has been removed from today's meeting, I felt compelled to encourage you all to ensure that everything being done is being done in decency and in order. As a child at Capitol Heights Elementary School, we were taught a song that has been with me for my entire life. "I believe the children are our future." I hope that you all believe that as well, and will cherish the children that you are overseeing. What can be improved in the school system? What areas of waste and abuse are causing our schools to be closed? Why is, why is closing schools the only answer? The school closing method is not addressing the problem, since you most recently closed schools in 2009, and you are back at it again. You have historically closed schools, however, the funding shortfall still exists. When will we explore, when will you explore other viable options, since this one isn't working? With that being said, Mr. CEO, I ask that you utilize your management team, the county board, parents, and the community to assess, analyze, and implement processes for the betterment of our children and communities. If needed, I'm sure we all can rely on County Executive Asher and Baker to assist us, in ensuring that all Prince George's County students receive the same treatment. As you are aware, the support of everyone in our community is essential, as evidenced during Tuesday's hearing. Instead of moving forward with closing and consolidations, I encourage you all to work with all interested parties, so that we can come up with viable alternatives. Can we establish a county-wide school working group? What can we do to eliminate the disparity amongst the northern and southern parts of our county schools? Stop utilizing school board funds to pay for school assessments, since these organizations most likely don't have a vested interest in our children or communities. There are, these are just some initiatives that can be explored to ensure that we are doing what's best for the students and communities. In closing, despite the odds against Forestville High School, the students still have school pride and love their school. As most of you may be aware, the girls' basketball team is nationally ranked for the first time in school history. In addition, they won the, our Prince George's County Girls' Basketball Championship last night, and the MVP player is in here, New Washington. Can you stand up? In closing, I just want to say thank you, and please join, uh, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. We have LaShayla Clark, Donna Dingell, and Patricia Reed coming up.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the topic of recess. Two and a half years ago, my husband and I decided to move our family from Georgia to Maryland with the hopes of our children receiving a high-quality education. Despite what we heard regarding education in Prince George's County, we looked for a school that was ranked high and bought a home a little over a year ago. I have three small children, a four-year-old, a two-year-old, and a seven-month-old. My elders will be starting school this fall. Recently, my eyes have been opened to a number of issues that reside in our county school system. Many of the families that I have met here are planning to homeschool their children or send them to private school. One of those parents who sent her children to private school said, "Our children will be done with school by the time they are, by the time they fix everything." Nevertheless, I believe that my children can and will receive a great education in Prince George's County, so I'm here to ask you to consider research-based policies for our school system. It was while visiting schools that I asked an administrator how much time the students have for recess. She told me fifteen minutes. I was a shock. She went on to say that Prince George's County schools require fifteen minutes. I have since learned that each school has an option to allow up to thirty minutes of recess a day. However, many schools only provide the minimum. I recently spoke to her principal in Prince George's County who increased the time of recess at her school. I learned a couple of things from my conversation with her. One is that she wants what is best for all of our students. Two, she wants her school to aim for the bronze level for the Healthy Schools Program, which encourages at least twenty minutes of recess per day. Research shows that children need to play. In fact, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, after recess, students are more attentive and better able to perform cognitively. Several studies show that recess made children more attentive and more productive in the classroom. The length of recess for most schools ranged from twenty minutes to sixty minutes a day. In other countries like Japan, elementary-age students get a ten-to-fifteen-minute break every hour. According to the AAP, minimizing or eliminating recess may be counterproductive to academic achievement, as a growing body of evidence suggests that recess promotes not only physical health and social development, but also cognitive performance. Recently, Eagle Mountain Elementary School in Fort Worth, Texas, has been in the news because they give their kindergarten and first-grade students two fifteen-minute breaks in the morning and two fifteen-minute breaks in the afternoon, and they found that their students are less fidgety and more focused. I personally would like to see the minimum of recess increased to thirty minutes a day. However, I acknowledge that we must take baby steps, and I ask that you raise the minimum to at least twenty minutes a day. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ladonna Dingell, Patricia Reed, Christine Wolf Elliott, and Tanya Wingfield. Does Ladonna Dingell?
My son is a kindergarten student in the elementary autism program at Skyline Elementary. I am concerned with the decision to close Skyline Elementary School and the proposal to send the students in the autism program back to their neighborhood schools. This business decision does not take into account the learning styles and needs of an individual on the autism spectrum. Children with autism frequently have difficulty adjusting to new social situations, loud environments, and may be overwhelmed by large groups and changes in their daily schedules. But with the proposal to send approximately sixty students from Skyline back to their neighborhood schools in less than six months, they will be exposed to unfamiliar social situations, new classmates and teachers, new school environments and school schedules, while still being expected to meet the demands of the Common Core curriculum. These students are being set up to fail. For children with autism, Skyline Elementary allows the students to thrive by allowing smaller classroom environments with staff members who understand the learning styles and behaviors of children with autism. Special education teachers, occupational therapists, speech therapists, and paraprofessionals are readily available to the students to ensure that they excel in their educational endeavors. With the proposed closure of Skyline, the students, parents, and staff have not been adequately informed by the Board of Education or the Department of Special Education how these services will be provided in their neighborhood schools. In the letters that the parents of Skyline received in the beginning of February, the notice said that the Board, the Department of Special Education will meet with, with the families on March 16th, 2016. This meeting should have been held prior to the public hearing and announcement of the school closure. No explanation has been provided to parents as to why our children are not being rezoned to other elementary autism programs in the county, or how the determination on which resources will be used to determine what services they will receive in their neighborhood schools. What is available to one child with autism in Prince George's County should be available to all. As a parent of a child with autism, I want and expect my child to succeed in school. Last year, I was encouraged to send my son to Skyline over his neighborhood school, so he could have the resources available to succeed, and at Skyline, he has. Every day, he passes no fewer than four elementary schools to get to the school that meets his needs, and I am willing to sacrifice my convenience so that he can adequately be educated in the Prince George's County Public School System. Mr. Superintendent and the board, I hope that you will reconsider the proposal to close Skyline Elementary School. Its closure will be a disservice to all families with children of autism in southern Prince George's County. For a school system whose motto is "Great by Choice," I hope that the Board of Education will make great and appropriate educational decisions for all students in the Prince George's County Public School System.
Thank you. We have Patricia Reed, Christine Wolf Elliott, Tanya Wingfield, and Winona Edwards. Is Patricia Reed here? Patricia Reed? How about Christine Wolf Elliott? Come on up.
Mr. Maxwell, I'll address this to you tonight, because I spoke on Tuesday as well. My daughter, Taylor, has been diagnosed with autism as a very young age, and her needs are very specialized care. By closing Skyline, you are violating her right to the education she needs and deserves. You are discriminating against my child and her specific need by forcing her to adapt to what typical children need. In Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act, it describes that federal laws that protect the rights of children with disabilities and their parents, this can be found on the parent, in the parent handbook and on your website. It states that my child has the right to receive a free, appropriate, public education. No one here can convince me that sending an autistic child to a- No one here can convince me that sending an autistic child to a regular classroom is appropriate. It is not your responsibility to, I mean, I'm sorry, is it not your responsibility to ensure that children with disabilities are not discriminating against? Aren't you directly violating what we, what you eliminated all, when all, in all of her options? Under 504, Section D, it also states that you will provide free special education and related aids and services designated to meet a student's individual education need and adequately as her needs as students without disabilities. Would you shut down an elementary school and force an elementary school-aged child or children to now attend high school or college and say that's adequate education? No. Then why would you shut down my child's school with an autism program and force her into a classroom with over 20 children and a teacher who is not trained to qualify to teach and/or consider that adequate? My child does not communicate like typical children. She does not have the verbal skills to defend herself. She will not be able to tell her teacher that she is uncomfortable when she needs more help, or even if she's being bullied. Please do not send my child to an environment where she is different. Under Skyline's program, it is becoming more and, she is becoming more and more herself every day. Please don't take that away. Do you know what it takes to take care of a nurturing child or a nurtured child with autism? We put tears, time, money, and help to help them. We've lost sleep worrying about tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tanya Wingfield, followed by Winona Edwards, Stacy Holmes, and Darlene Bennett.
I had a chance to look at the budget briefly, and there's a couple of things I just want to highlight. One is, you know, we're talking about closing schools to save money, and you need money, but then I'm looking at all this duplicity sitting up here in the budget. For example, you have this Associate Superintendent for Special Education and Student Services proposed. We once had student services and special education and parent and community, all of those areas, all in one umbrella because they connect. Usually, kids that need these student services, that you need to have the family involved. So now you have this split up in two areas where it could probably be consolidated in one. Then I'm looking at the strategic planning and performance and the strategic resource planning. I looked in and read the description there. So closely matched, looks like they can be consolidated. I'm sure that can save Forestville. Then I'm looking at the fact that you have, we have a CEO that we are paying somewhere in the neighborhood, close to $100,000 more than what we've paid past leaders of our school, who has one reporting person to him. And the, the, the people, the organizations that, or the departments that used to report to the previous CEOs, you hire a chief of staff, and then you put them under them. That can be consolidated. We are paying good money, he can do the job. Then we talk about busing our kids. Well, let's remember, and I guess some people don't, I grew up in Prince George's County, went to Prince George's County School, so I was a, a person that had to go through busing. So there was an agreement in 1998 that was, uh, we reached with the school system, the MOU in 1998. The school system never fully implemented that, just so everybody knows. Court orders, they don't expire until they are fulfilled. We have not fulfilled it. So we should not be busing kids all around the town when they have neighborhood schools, and all you gotta do is move the resources there. That was the whole purpose of that, of, of us settling that lawsuit. And then, why people don't get notices, you know, in sufficient time so that you can study the information? We used to have first reader, second reader, so we had time to meet, well, you know why? There's something called HB 1107. Yes, people, we need to ask for that to be repealed, because that has allowed our system now to be ruled under a monopoly. Namely, our, our, uh, exec, county executive and our CEO basically can do what they please because of this bill. You want changes? Repeal that bill. Talk to your state senators, talk to your delegates. And then, when I look at all these increases in the budget, and I look at one where we have other operating systems where we used to say that goes for all of our schools, minus $2,000, $2 million, minus $10 million, and then you only put $36 million back. That's only a $12 million increase.
Winona Edwards, come on up. Stacy Holmes, Darlene Bennett, and David Khan in that order.
Good evening. My name is Winona Edwards, and my child attends Francis Scott Key Elementary. She is in the fifth grade in a comprehensive special education program. It's called CSAP, which is a self-contained learning environment with about 10 to 12 students per teacher and a paraprofessional. My daughter was officially identified as having a learning challenge in the third grade. She transitioned to Francis Scott Key in the fourth grade. When she transitioned to Francis Scott Key, her test indicated that she was reading way below her grade level, possibly at a kindergarten level and at a first-grade level in math. Her teachers worked with her daily at her previous school, but they were not able to provide her with the services that are offered at Francis Scott Key. Before her transition, sometimes, sometimes she was disruptive, she was labeled as not interested in learning, and above all, she made B's, C's, and D's. When she transitioned to Francis Scott Key, she received a team of professionals that provided her with assistance, that readily helped her with all her school challenges. When she changed schools, her environment changed from 20, 25-plus kids in her classroom to about 10 kids with a teacher and a paraprofessional. She was going to get the services she required in order to be successful. She worked really hard, and her teacher helped her improve her reading and math skills. The first year, she received a good citizenship from her teacher, and she said she was respectful. She was no longer a disruption to the classroom. In her second year at Francis Scott Key, she now has made honor roll twice. She feels good about going to school, she is very proud about our accomplishments, and she's receiving, um, and receiving the notification that I received three weeks ago stating that Francis Scott Key would have their sixth graders transitioning to the middle school devastated me. It was alarming, upsetting, unwarranted, especially since my child attends a special education program like the CSAP, which requires her to be in a self-contained environment, which the middle school does not offer. I'm a parent that likes to have a choice, and my child's education, not, and my child's not, education, not only because I care about her, but because of her learning challenges. When you notify parents, you have to give them ample time to process and make decisions. If I wanted her to be in a lottery, I told, I missed the lottery timeframe, so I cannot apply to that, so she cannot go to another school that might offer her some different types of services and experiences. The bottom line is that children at Francis Scott Key that are in the CSAP program deserve to complete their program in their current environment. Studies show that children with learning disabilities do better with consistency and organization. The principal and the coordinator run a tight program, and they ensure children aren't labeled, they ensure children feel comfortable. Thank you, and please vote against the modernization plan.
Thank you. Stacy Holmes is next.
Well, I'd like to name change. Greetings, my name is Stanley Holmes. I am the president of the Skyline Citizens Association. It's okay, I was here the other night, got it right. I'll be addressing this as a community leader. Listen to the honorable Prince George's County County Executive and the Chief Executive Office, Officer of the Prince George's County Public Schools. Greetings from our community. We would ask that at this time, you please act, because a lot of people are in the impression that everything is fixed. It's not. But please act now to put the hold on the plans you have for our elementary school at Skyline. The Skyline and its citizens have over 50 years demonstrated what a model community should look like. We still have members who are the original homeowners. Skyline's kind of like that little cozy place you go to with the small-town atmosphere. We know each other, we look out for our neighbors, we are that any town USA. Okay? Our neighbors just across the street from us is the town of Morningside, shares the same businesses and places of worship as we do, with one exception, they lost their elementary school years ago. At what ti, at one time, Benjamin D. Floy was our neighborhood middle school. I attended it. And now it's a lottery-driven creative and performing arts K-8 school. Okay? Now you're about ready to take the only other elementary school we have in our area. Speaking from a community standpoint, reckless removal of a school from a thriving community, specifically elementary schools, are not positive steps for the county. They destroy neighborhoods. Local schools within a community keeps home prices stable, encourages young, first-time homeowners to invest and raise families, all the while increasing the overall county tax base. I have yet to mention the autism program at Skyline Elementary, but you already versed on that. You know what's going on there, you've heard it. The American Disabilities Act kind of makes it clear that we need to take care of these kids, and I'm sitting up here saying, unfortunately, what's going to happen is it could be lawsuits. And look, let me tell you, make it perfectly clear, we're going to be the ones paying for it. You forcing us to sue ourselves. Okay? Now, you, you ought to be tired of lawsuits, first of all, because I know you're in the middle of a big one, they haven't even put a price tag on yet. And, uh, you know, that, that's a leadership issue. Something broke down in the system that we're paying for. Okay, your decisions have managed. In my school system, my neighborhood, you scared the hell out of my neighbors. You scared the school staff, the parents, and the same process, you broke the students' trust. Using hidden agendas and sketchy practices, you have destroyed, uh, lives.
Thank you. This is the first one, there's the other one. Darlene Bennett, David Khan, and Sybil Brown.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I want to first, I was here Tuesday, Dr. Maxwell, and I was disappointed that I didn't see you here, because we had a lot of people here that was expecting to see you. Um, I want to first just kind of remind you guys of why you're in office. It's not for self-agendas, it's for our students, and if there are any other agendas that are there, then you need to be, then you need to leave now. Okay? I'm a Christian woman, and the Bible states that a house divided shall fall. So therefore, the CEO needs to be working with the, the school board, not against. We need to have everyone in cohesion together. Also, the Bible also states, what's done in the dark comes in the light. So that means whatever may not be exposed now, eventually it's going to come out. And there's a consequence for every decision that is made. You may not see the consequence now, but the consequences are coming, even after lack of our students. That's my love here. I'm not, it's not about titles, it's not about positions, it's about our students, and that's why I'm here. I'm also asking that you re, please reconsider the closing of Skyline and all of the schools that are affected. We need to put a stay order until we can figure out how the MGM plays a part in this, in this situation. Because we can look at those funds, schools may not need to be touched. We have schools that are in thriving neighborhoods that need to stay there. We also have a great autism program. I have two children that have gone through Skyline Elementary. Neither one is autistic, but I worked hard four years ago to keep the Sky, to keep the autism program in Skyline. Now here we go again, messing with things that are not broke, let's leave it alone. Our children deserve us, and if we, if we go against them, then what do they have? We are, they are looking for our leaders. They are looking for our leaders to do the right thing. Now, whoever did these stats, it could be for business reasons, and the contractor may have stayed, stated whatever it was that they wanted to do to get the contract. But the point is, it's not about money. Our children should not be looked at as a dollar amount. It should be looked at at the values of the things that are, that are important to them. So I, I leave you with that, it's just, I want you to please consider all options and to work together, put together a task force, may, bring the parents in, the neighborhoods in, and see how we can work this out. Thank you.
Come on up, Ms. Khan, followed by Sybil Brown, Armani McMillan, and Floyd Shields.
Before we start my time, I'd like to correct my listing on your supplemental agenda. Not only is my last name spelled C-A-H-N, I am not a Khan, not Genghis or anything, and also I am one of two co-chairs of Citizens for an Elected Board, not the President. If you can hit that button. Citizens for an Elected Board is the organization that fought the takeover of our schools. We were unsuccessful, it's set up to make us unsuccessful, and we have what we have When Asher Baker got his cronies in the General Assembly to pass this legislation, which took away our right to vote for an all-elected school board, and I mean no disrespect to those of you who have been appointed, he did some other things. He reserved the power to himself to appoint four of the members and threw one to the county council so they wouldn't oppose things he was doing. And he also reserved himself the right to name the CEO. And in doing that, he gave the CEO a power that no other superintendent has in our state, and that is to be a committee of one to decide on school consolidations. The hearings that we've had on boundaries and consolidations were really boundary hearings, not consolidation hearings, because this board does not have the power to decide on consolidations. And I'll say a couple of things that I said on Tuesday. Dr. Maxwell, I urge you, since you are the decision-maker here, to have your own hearing with you sitting up there in the middle of this big thing and you listening to people, give the people of this county due process. If you have the power, then you have a responsibility to have a public hearing or two public hearings and meet with your constituents, the people of this county, to hear what we have to say. And I'm not going to repeat everything I said yesterday, because I hope to do it at your hearing. Okay? I will say this about Forestville, though. One of the slogans of this school district is to graduate our students career-ready. And there are no students in this county who are more career-ready than those who graduate from the Forestville Military Academy. And I use that term advisedly because it's not called that anymore. And they are ready to move into a career in the military and perhaps elsewhere, where they can get training either in a, of, um, a field, a skilled field, or go on to college and get that paid for by the military. What a fantastic opportunity to people, particularly people from families of limited means. This is a great school. And before I go, I just want to hope that Kathy Richards Andrews gets that Principal of the Year. She deserves it, she's got a great program there.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is Sybil Brown, followed by Armani McMillan, Floyd Shields, and Lenelle William Halsey. Is Sybil Brown here? I don't see her coming up, so how about Armani McMillan? Armani McMillan here.
Today, I stand before you to speak as an alumni of Prince George's County Public Schools, a swim instructor of students that attend Skyline Elementary School, and a current Prince George's County employee. Despite the stigma attached to PG County schools, I represent great possibilities as a graduate of an academy that molded me into the woman I am today. I decided to return to the county as a coach and employee in order to impact students that come from the same areas I did and face the same issues I faced. I feel this is a quality some people lack once they are placed in positions of power, and that quality is forgetting where you came from. I ask when decisions are made regarding Southern Prince George's County, everyone involved considers the dilemma Southern County students face, such as the classroom size needed in order for the average Southern student to grasp the concept, the distance needed from home to school in order to be able to participate in after-school activities, and the neighborhood issues that impact their safety. I wish I could say there was no disparities between Northern and Southern Prince George's County, however, they are seen plain as day. In order to prove the board's immense level of care for the Southern portion of the county, a plan that results in equality should be put in action. Every school should offer its students the same opportunities, the same quality of computers, the same quantity of supplies, and the same confidence that they attend a school with the ability to equip them with the tools to do something great. As an employee, I ask that a plan is put into action that shows the board cares about the phenomenal teachers, support staff, and advocates who never end their day when the final bell rings, those of us that cringe at the thought of not being able to continue working in the county we are passionate about. I end with never forget where you came from. The same love, dedication, and devotion that led many board members to bring their talents back to the county is shared by employees in the county that may be forced to leave as a result of consolidation. Many of you sitting in front of me defy the odds, and that is what the employees at Skyline, Forestville, and all other schools on your list are doing every day. That is what your former and current students are trying to do, and all of your decisions directly affect that.
Thank you. I have Floyd Shields, Lynell Williams Halsey, and Earl O'Neil.
My name is Floyd Shields, I'm Vice President of Skyline Citizen Association, Homeowners Association. I come here today to represent Skyline Elementary School. And I wanna say that I'm a little disappointed that all of the schools that y'all decided to close is inside the Beltway. Predominant black. I'm a little disappointed with them. But I come here to talk about Skyline. Y'all wanna close this school, don't have anywhere else for the students to go, you're taking their hope away from them. They don't have no hope. Without hope, it's a springboard to everything in life, to faith, to wherever you're gonna be, whatever you're gonna accomplish in life. You want them to fail, that's what you're saying? They gonna fail if you don't do something about it. This is what I think, you guys are here to help students, to help them to be the best. This is what I'm looking for you to do. Help the students to be the best that they can be. Without hope, they're not gonna be anything. You're gonna close the only school that's helping autism kids. Your grandkids, your kids, some of y'all young enough to have kids could have autism. You need to consider that, you need to think about that. All we ask is just give them to be all they could be. You got peoples from all other countries wanna come to America, cuz they say if you work hard, you can have a success. You can be what you wanna be if you work hard. But I want that to be true with you guys. I want y'all to give them a chance to work hard to be all they could be. This program is a successful program. We got a young man that wrote a book. The program is successful. Don't take the only school from these kids. If you do, you're giving your son a death wish for them to succeed. You know, they're not gonna succeed without this. They need this school, this the only school. I can understand if you had a couple more, you can send them to when you close this one, but you don't.
Good evening. My name is Lynell Williams Halsey, and I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Friendly High School PTSA, a secretary, as a concerned parent, and former Friendly High School students, and a current resident of Prince George's County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. It is with disbelief and confusion that my husband, Warren Halsey, and I, who is retired military, learned Friendly High School would lose some of their students due to boundary changes, which will infect our enrollment and possibly cause our school to close. Friendly has a long, proud tradition in our community, serving as a place for local basketball camps, boy and girl scout troops, physical fitness classes, providing civic information such as a session recently on new voting machines, hosting school boards, South Region meetings, county-wide informational sessions, a place of worship for churches such as Ebenezer AME, and the list goes on and on and on. We have a newly renovated auditorium, a new gym for our boys and girls basketball teams and volleyball teams. We now have the Friendly Academy of Health and Biosciences, and students are excelling in that program in spite of being underfunded. With regards to the cost savings, what will the cost be to our children and our parents? What town will they have to be up at the bus stop in the morning? They're already there at oh, dark thirty. How long will the bus ride be, and we are guaranteed no overcrowding? What happens when a bus doesn't show up and someone has to do a second route they don't wanna do, and kids have already missed time from school? How will they make that up? How actively will students be able to participate in after-school activities when they're required to put in twelve-hour days if they're up at five-thirty in the morning and the activity isn't over till six? Getting to Gwen Park is a nightmare on a good day. What happens when it rains? We have the National Harbor, Tanger Outlets, and now the MGM Grand being built. If anything, Friendly High School should be the flagship for South County with employment and business opportunities in our backyard. Why not take this opportunity, run with it, and expand the Career Academies and Career and Technology Education Program at Friendly? And why not make us the pilot school for the Parkway in Technology Early College High School Program we just heard about tonight? On a personal note, we have two sons who are graduates of Friendly High School. I'm wearing this jacket for one of them. They're both doing well. One will be a college graduate in two years, another one will be this year. My youngest son has an IEP, is diagnosed high-functioning autistic, and he is in the general education program. Closing the school could possibly, and more than likely, would set him back academically and emotionally. He is on the diploma track scheduled to graduate in 2019. How fair is it to now put him in unfamiliar, overcrowded, overwhelming environment and expect him to be okay? We are still friendly strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Earl O'Neil, come on up. Earl O'Neil, followed by Anissa Stanley, A.J. Smith, and Tamara Davis Brown.
Good evening. My name is Earl O'Neil. I am the current President of South County Economic Development Association. I'm the past President of Friendly's High School PTA, along with the past President of Potomac Lanning PTA. I have been a active member in South County for the last twenty years. Three of my children have graduated from Friendly High School. All three are college graduates, and two have advanced degrees. The estimated saving of this plan is a mere $2 million, which is less than ten percent of the school's budget, 1.95 billion-dollar budget. We have asked, what is the point? It is clear that the Board of Education is usually redistricting feeder in middle schools to keep enrollment low to Friendly High School. This will result in eventual closing of Friendly High School. Why? Some problems immediately come to mind with this ill-thought-out decision. Eventual overcrowding in middle and high schools, longer transport for hundreds of students, so of course the end of those students attending the neighborhood school. I would ask that you reconsider the new boundaries, and that community forums should be held at all-impact schools before a hash, a decision is made like this one is being made. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I come to you as a lifelong resident of Prince George's County. I attended Oxon Hill Elementary School, Oxon Hill Middle School, and Oxon Hill Senior High. When I attended these schools, they were excellent educational facilities. I also come before you as a parent of two children currently attending Prince George's Public County Schools in Southern Maryland. Now that I have a third and fourth grader of my own, and I'm raising them, I feel as if they're being denied the same educational excellence that I receive at the expense of politics and poor financial planning. Children in the southern area of the county are struggling to learn in antiquated facilities, using outdated technology, sitting in overcrowded facilities, and not to mention, some of the schools have restrooms that are so disgusting that children refuse to use them and are putting their health at risk. I say all of this to bring me to this point, that when I sat down and I received this agenda, I found it very disheartening to find under line eight-point-two that has been postponed for discussion, which was my original reason for coming. For the school boundaries, I see item nine-point-one on the agenda says, "Site feasibility analysis. New Northern Area Middle School, one and two, approval and acceptance." How can this be, when the schools in Southern Maryland are very antiquated and overcrowded? You're closing them, you're talking about busing kids thirteen, fourteen miles a day in the dark, going and coming back and forth to school. How can this be that I see funding or even a topic of discussion on this agenda for two brand-new schools in the northern area of the county? As a lifelong resident, I am very disappointed and upset at what I'm seeing. I ask that you all reconsider this line item nine-point-one under new business, and reconsider some of the school closings that you are preparing to do, update some of the other schools that are in Southern Maryland, and make all education equal for all of the children.
Thank you. We have A.J. Smith and Tamara Davis Brown. We've added, we brought LaShawn Jackson to the back and added four additional speakers based on the mix-up. So it'll be A.J. Smith, Tamara Davis Brown, and Ashby Harmon. Our next on the list is A.J. Smith here. I don't see him coming up. How about Tamara Davis Brown? Is it Tamara Davis Brown? I don't see Tamara. So Ashby Harmon is next.
My name is Ashby Harmon, and I'm looking at the budget, how many of these budgets that come behind all these people, it's kinda tight, but I'm gonna give you what I got. Now, them numbers that you see, they're not the accurate figures. I've been in accounting, I know how people do, when you put what you want for us to know, not what the truth is. That's the first step, getting out of the budget, coming through, closing another school. Why you gonna close the school in the neighborhood when parents are helping the school in the neighborhood? You take them out of the neighborhood, who gonna help the children? And getting up in the morning, four and five o'clock, getting on a bus, and you telling me you giving children the opportunity to learn? No. Even if you put the school together, they won't have an opportunity, like the cheerleaders, the basketball team, they all got numbers. When they get to that number, all of them ain't gonna make it, cuz they won't have an opportunity. You got to have more schools, just like you have more jaws. You got more jaws, you have more people, you make more money, and you pay more tax. So that's the same way the school should go. You got more schools, got more students in them, you get better tax pay. We pay school tax, and we never quit paying school tax. And y'all tell me y'all don't have enough of money? And giving all the power to one person of the board? Becca, I mean, something wrong with Becca. You don't give the debt guy that much power. Y'all are human-educated peoples on the board. Y'all should have some say-so. Why you gonna go outside of the circle and bring in somebody that you know can deal with these twelve peoples on the board, and they ain't got no say-so? There's no way. Come on now. You know, I talked to Becca from time to time. He's no stranger, but he not doing right. He should show his face. A big meeting like tonight, he should have showed his face. People voted for him. We put these peoples in an office, and then he take one person, school board, and a CEO, and chairperson, just to carry the whole board. I can't understand that. Y'all are very educated. Y'all ain't no dummies, that's what I mean. Y'all are very educated people. Y'all have some say-so. If I was on the board and I had my education, they would give me some say-so. Oh, yeah. And I'm gonna leave. I was in the March of sixty-three, nineteen sixty-three, so you know I done been through something. And I'm not backing up them, but it's right. And y'all should have more say-so.
Thank you. We have Shelton Gordon, LaShawn Jackson, Josette Williamson, and Aaron Barnes.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I want to say hello to everyone, everyone who's assembled here today. I wanted to tell you a couple of things. I was here Tuesday, and I told you my story, is how I was born in Prince George's County, raised up in Prince George's County, went to Forestville High School, had the opportunity to go to college, came back, became a pastor, and now I'm educating kids in my church who are all one-hundred percent success rate of every senior who's got, have graduated from Prince George's County School, and now are in college right now, and they have two more that's on their way this year. But prior to that, I served in a ministry in Washington, DC, where I was on administrative staff there, and we had such a high death rate until we created a ministry called Life After Homicide. And then during the rezoning and the redistricting of District of Columbia schools, that was just recent, within the last two to three years, we saw the increase of homicides rates increase until we had to almost double our staff to go and to counsel families after the families would, you know, the people would get killed and all that stuff. And there were many street beefs and school beefs, and we may pretend as if those beefs are not real, but I let you know that they do honestly exist. Listen, and what's going to happen is that, you know, and once we do that, there are specific beefs between Forestville and Sutland. We can say it's petty, we can ignore it, we can act like that it's irrelevant, but I assure you that there will be a after-all, there will be a fall that will come after this situation. I can promise you that. And those who are sitting here today with the nice gold-shiny plates with your name on it, you won't have to deal with it. Guess who's gonna have to deal with it? It will be Pastor Shelton Gordon. I'm gonna have to walk into a setting as such as this, and I'm gonna have to hold the hand of a mother who was killed from someone because of the rezoning, and it's gonna be me who's gonna say, let us all stand. I am the resurrection and the life saved of the Lord. He that believed in me, though he were dead, yet shall he live again. And then I'm gonna have to take them to the cemetery and say, though we commit this body back to the ground, earth to earth, ashes to ashes, and dust to dust, and you won't be there, and I will be there, then I will have to sit with that family and counsel that family, and get with that family, and educate them, and try to bring them along after the homicide is done. So I reconsider you. I ask you to reconsider the fact that in rezoning and boundaries and closing schools, that after-all, that's gonna come with the deaths of the community. You think it's something going on now? I promise you this will happen. Ignore me if you want, I will be back here a year after that take place, and I won't have to say anything, I won't have to say I told you so, but I promise you, you will know. Don't create a problem that you will not be equipped, cuz at that point, you are not equipped to deal with it. They have to come and see me. They have to come and see me. It's gonna be Pastor Shelton Gordon who's gonna have to counsel, who's gonna have to go through all this, spend time away from his kids based upon the rezoning of the school. I promise you. It will happen. So ignore me if you want, poo-poo me if you will, act like I don't know what I'm talking about, but I promise you, it will happen. So mark my words. I am the resurrection and the life saved by the Lord.
Thank you, LaShawn Jackson.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm LaShawn Jackson, and I would first like to say that I don't want any of you to misunderstand what it is that we are asking for. As we all want better-looking schools, qualified teachers, excellent academic programs, and a broad range of extracurricular activities. However, we want you to communicate and transition effectively and in decency and in order. We want all the schools in Prince George's County to have the same attractions. And with that being said, I ask you, Dr. Maxwell, what are the benefits of my child going to Sutland High School? And if not, when will I know if she will still remain at Forestville High School her senior year? It seems to me that you should be upset with Rusher and Baker for appointing you to be in a position such as this. Did you not think that parents would not come and fight for their children? Well, unlike me, I'll come and speak. Some of them need more than three minutes. I need more than three minutes, but I'm gonna take this time to say what I need to say. I hope that you'll take this into consideration, Dr. Maxwell, because you are the decision-maker. You probably should talk to Rusher and Baker. And keep this in mind, karma's like cancer. It can be deadly.
Thank you. Josette Williamson and Aaron Barnes.
Good evening, board. Good evening, audience. My name is Josette Williamson. I have an autism child, a wonderful autism child that attends Skyline Elementary. Dr. Maxwell, my child attends Skyline Elementary because when my child was placed at Hillcrest Heights Elementary in pre-K, they did not know what to do with her. They called me so much, I lost my job because I had to go to her school every day, thirty days straight. When I asked my child, asked for my child to be tested, they gave me every reason in the book not to test my child. Well, let me try this strategy, and let me try that strategy. I had to fight and have my child placed in the pre-K autism program at Wheatley. Before then, when my child was at Hillcrest Heights, she urinated on herself, she tried to eat on the wall because people, kids were staring at her. She went to pre-K at Wheatley. Jessica Bishop was her teacher and got my child speaking in less than two months. She got my child able to follow a schedule to lead in her classroom. And these are the same qualities that's happening at Skyline. You cannot go and piss on my leg and tell me it's raining. I said that the other night, and I'm saying this again. You cannot be capricious in your thinking and thinking you could take special needs children and put them in a educational system that is not equipped for them. Mr. Burrows, you are the representative for District Nine, which is where I live at. I urge you to go to Panorama, which is where they're trying to send my child, and see if they have things in place for my child to go there. Because when I called, they say they cannot bus my child. My child would either have to walk through the woods or walk up Twenty-third Parkway to get to school. That is not correct. They told me they have no special education in place. Mr. Wallace, I ask that you come to Skyline because that is your district and that you impose on Dr. Mason because her theory is that autism children will adapt. Mr. Dr. Maxwell, I suggest you talk to Dr. Mason because you cannot base a whole slew of wonderful autism children, their future, based on a theory. You need to have things in place. I know that we have all these immersion schools and university schools, and I would, and that's wonderful. That's not a need. That's not a need. It's wonderful. You could learn a foreign language in PG County. I learned two of them. I learned two of them and traveled the world. But guess what? All these emerging university programs, which are on the northern side and it's not on the southern side, my child can go to if she want to, because they do not have services in place for special needs children. How about that? So let's consider that in our decision. And I know it's a hard job, and I know you're sitting there with your faces. You've been here, and I know you tired of all these folks giving this on your lap, but I'm gonna give it to you more, and I'm gonna keep coming. This is my third time visiting here, and I'm gonna keep coming until I see a change, because it is not fair.
Thank you. Our final registered speaker is Aaron Barnes.
Good evening, Dr. Eubanks. Thanks for allowing me in the mix-up to have the opportunity to speak to Dr. Maxwell. So I spoke to the board on Tuesday, so tonight I'm here to talk to you. I want to tell you a story about me and my family. I live on Andrews Air Force Base. I served in the Air Force. My son is nine years old. He's been in the county schools since he was four years old. He's been on the IEP since he was diagnosed by Virginia Beach City Public Schools' Diagnostics Lab with pervasive development disorder not otherwise specified. So he's never been at a neighborhood school. He's never been in the general education environment. All right, so let me tell you a story. My son went to James Ritter Randall Elementary as a pre-K and a kindergartner. He did fine. In first grade, his teacher quit mid-year because he didn't like the administration at Clinton Grove. As his new quote-unquote certified special educator came into his life, he began to elope, bite, spit, hit, and do all these things that were uncharacteristic of my beautiful little nine-year-old autistic boy, okay? Second grade, he's in a refocus room every day. The situation at Clinton Grove got so bad, sir, that I had to call the Maryland Disability Law Center to come help me through the IEP process. In that process, you guys brought in Betsy Adams, the autism specialist, okay? And she evaluated him, and when we reconvened at a three-day IEP meeting, she moved him to Skyline because the CSEP program that he was in, which was a specialized self-contained classroom, was not good enough. So where are we at now? Last year, he got sent to Skyline Elementary. From the first day he was at that school, Dr. Maxwell, there was not one behavior problem. You know why? Because the teachers and the staff there have specialized training in kids with autism. And you can't put a label on autism. Every autistic kid is different. You have autism, kids with autistic that are geniuses. You have some that don't talk. You have some that look normal. Like kids look at my son and say, "Oh, there's nothing wrong with him. He's just shy." But on the inside, he's full of anxiety and has all these other issues that I don't want to get into here. But where he is at now, in one year, his teacher, Ms. Selena Johnson, has brought his DRA score up from a three to a sixteen. That's first grade, third level. And he's not, he's not where he needs to be, but we're on our way. And it's my fear, sir, that if you close our program, my son and every other, and every other child that lives on Andrews Air Force Base and is serviced by Skyline Elementary will regress because they're gonna be in a place where they're not comfortable. My son was the biggest behavior problem at Clinton Grove. Now he takes the attendance to the office every day. Additionally, how do you expect Francis T. Evans to service my, my child and all the kids on Andrews? How are they, how, all right, for example, his IEP requires him to have scheduled breaks for heavy work, a small classroom environment, advanced notice of scheduled changes. I know for a fact that the classrooms at Francis T. Evans are overcrowded. The kindergarten class there has twenty-eight students and no paraprofessional. So how's a teacher going to service my child and all the other kids that deserve a fair education as well? Please, sir, please do not close Skyline. Thank you.
Thank you again, citizens, for coming to speak to us this evening. That concludes our public comment agenda. As always, I encourage you to stay for the remainder of the meeting. Particularly today, we are going to be addressing the proposed budget for next year. And trust me when I tell you that the budget and the concerns that you've raised today are intimately connected, and we need your support to make sure we get the funds we need. So we will move on. There's no discussion item on Discussion 4.0, so we move on to 5.0, the Consent Agenda. And I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of Items 5.1 through 5.5 under the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Items 5.1 to 5.5 require board approval of proclamations commemorating the following in Prince George's County Public Schools: Read Across America Day, National Women's History Month, Irish-American Heritage Month, and History Day, and a Stop the Violence Resolution.
Thank you. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to approve Items 5.1 through 5.5 under the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Items 5.1 through 5.5 under the Consent Agenda. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. We'll move on to the Budget Consent Agenda, and I'll yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an item, for an introduction of Items 6.1 through 6.4 under the Budget Consent Agenda. I'll remind folks that our student member cannot vote on the Budget Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. 6.1 through 6.4 require board approval of the March 2016 expenditure requirements, final acceptance and payment for work at C.T. Reed Elementary School and Kettering Elementary School, and the approval of the fiscal year 2017 Board of Education requested annual operating budget.
Thank you. Colleagues, may I assume the buzz is to move 6.4 under a separate item. Is that correct? All right. Is there any other separations you want to make, or just 6.4? Okay, so we will then entertain a motion to accept Items 6.1 through 6.3 under the Budget Consent Agenda. It has been moved and seconded to accept Items 6.1 through 6.3 under the Budget Consent Agenda. Seeing, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. That motion carries. On Item 6.4, I'll entertain a motion, and then we'll go to amendments. So can I entertain a motion to approve Item 6.4? It's been moved. May I have a second? It's been moved and seconded, and I'll now be open for discussion, Dr. Anderson and Mr. Wallace, and Ms. Jacobs. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to preface my remarks by saying that the budget that's presented to us is a marked improvement over what we've had in the past. There, there is, it represents an effort to improve literacy and to expand pre-K. My reason for wanting to speak tonight is that I think the effort is too modest. And while I understand Rome was not built in a day, I think that if we're committed to literacy and if we're committed to pre-K, that we've got to have our dollars to support those two. And while I appreciate deeply what you've done for the twenty-five lowest-performing schools in Prince George's County. And I have just a few suggestions there, and I'm going to put it in the form of a motion that regarding the reading specialists, we have twenty-five lowest-performing schools. And I think the literacy report suggested that we should have a reading specialist, a reading recovery teacher, and a math specialist in each of those schools. And we nearly had that. We have twenty-three reading specialists. I'd like to move that we have two additional ones placed in those schools. And we have twenty math specialists. I'd like to move that we have twenty-five math specialists, one for each of the schools. I'm not going to make this a part of the motion, but I'd like to have an accountability plan put in place to support. Because we're making this level of investment, we really need to monitor the performance of our students, and we need to hold everybody accountable for their performance.
So could you explicitly?
I will, Mr. Chair, and I know my time is running out. I move that we add two additional reading specialists and five additional math specialists to the twenty-five lowest-performing schools so that all of the twenty-five lowest-performing schools will have a reading specialist, a reading recovery teacher, and a math specialist.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam, do you have a specific dollar amount for that?
No.
Do you have, do you have, are you recommending any specific?
I am not recommending.
You're recommending that this be an addition to the budget?
No, I don't want it to be in addition to the budget. I would like to get with the administration. The Budget Committee will be happy to get with the administration and identify places where we could possibly take the funds for these additional.
So you're recommending that the administration discover the cuts. So colleagues, this is what we will do from here, because we have several choices when it comes to making a budget amendment. Colleagues, it is our responsibility to pass a budget tonight. We will vote on a budget tonight. So if an amendment passes that requires that the administration revise the budget, we will recess. The administration will take the time to make whatever changes that they need to make tonight, and we will come back and redo it and come back tonight and reconvene. So whether that takes an hour or five hours, then we will, then we will do that. If you have, if an amendment is made that simply adds to the budget, in other words, the bottom line of the budget, then that amendment can be taken, I think, without us needing to recess because that would just add to the bottom line. But I could not imagine how much time that this would take for the administration to do. But the amendment, the, and I apologize if I kind of did this in the wrong order, but I wanted to make sure the folks get, get the amendments right. But we will now put that amendment on the floor for debate.
Dr. Eubanks, can I make just one comment?
Yes, please do.
Even just flat-out additions will require a recalculation of the budget because of how they align in the state category.
All right, so flat-out additions will require that we, again, would it, would it require enough time that would require us to recess? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burrows.
I believe Mr. Wallace was before me.
This is on a totally different subject. This is on a totally different topic, right. Yes, I assume so. Mr. Wallace is back for, but this is on, this is, so my parliamentary, my parliamentary stuff was a little shaky. I'm in my NEA mode where there's a main motion, and then you make amendments to the main motion. So I know we do that a little differently here, so I got confused about that.
I can speak on this motion.
So, so, you know, this is a motion that I'll entertain because, you know, for, for the amendment. Right, and the motion has been seconded. So do you wish to speak on this amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
I would ask my colleagues to support this. Our students cannot function if they are not proficient and if they're not able to read or able to do basic math. This is a very, very modest amendment that Dr. Anderson is reaching. This is no surprise to the administration. Dr. Anderson chairs the Budget Committee, Budget and Finance Committee, and we've made these recommendations month after month, week after week. If we want our students to be able to compete in this workforce, they must know how to read. They must be able to do basic math. This amendment is a no-brainer, and I would urge all my colleagues to vote for it.
Dr. Eubanks? Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. The administration opposes this additional amendment. We've been working with this board the entire school year since September, taking into consideration the entire board's positions and recommendations, answering questions multiple times. We put forward, in response to board recommendations, board suggestions just last Friday, some additional literacy coaches, some additional resource teachers, and balanced that against math teachers and made some other adjustments, again, in response to board recommendations. We cannot continue each and every day to make adjustments to a budget by category. We have been, we have the requirement, we have the requirement to have the time to put together the budget materials and the documents for you to review and for you to be prepared to vote on. And you can't change them in an hour tonight or a couple hours on Monday. It's, it's a little more complicated than that. And I would encourage the members of the board to vote against additional amendments after a year of work on this.
Thank you. Ms. Epps?
So just to be clear...
So just to be clear, with regard to the work that's been done, and yes, I will acknowledge that it was, you know, it was put forth for the board to provide priorities, but when the board shows up in December and it's not at the level that we wanted, then we are already going in two different directions from go. And so now that it's time for us to pass a budget that already came in and it didn't fund the priorities that we care about at the level that we care about them, then we're going to continue, and my colleague, Dr. Anderson, has continued to tirelessly bring this point up, and you can see the record on YouTube. So at this point, this is how it's done. The Budget Committee and the General Assembly in Annapolis are doing the same process right now. And when you have a budget before you, you have a pot of money. If it's $100 and you have to split it so many different ways, sometimes you have to take money from where you would like it to go and put it where you need it to go. And so we are saying that if you're taking the 25 lowest performing schools, and me as a higher education, someone who works in higher education, seeing students taking placement exams, the reason why they're struggling is not because of what happened in high school, it's because of what happened or didn't happen in elementary school. We have an opportunity to take a stand and say from the very beginning, from the time that a child walks into Prince George's County Public Schools, that they are going to be fully supported across the board, from where I live up in Laurel, all the way down to Accokeet. So, you know, it's time, it's time for a change. Everything else in this country has changed except for education. It's time for a paradigm shift, and it's time to do it a different way. And I'm sorry that you, you know, that you feel that it's been done, but when the initial proposal comes in and it's lacking in the areas, and when we ask and continue to ask, then it's going to come down to this. And every year that that happens, this is what's going to happen. So I urge my colleagues, let's take a stand and make sure that the, we're talking about the lowest performing schools in Prince George's County. Make sure that we have the resources for those schools to bring them up from day one.
So I put myself in the order, followed by Anderson and Mr. Wallace. And colleagues, the problem with this proposal is simple. We want to add to the budget and we want to cut, but we aren't identifying, for us, it's our responsibility to say, well, what goes? There's most, 80% of what is in this budget is personnel. Who, when we add these 20 positions, which 20 positions do we cut to balance the budget? Which program do we cut to balance the budget? It's our responsibility as a board, colleagues, to be able to, if we're going to make tough decisions, to decide explicitly what tough decisions those are going to be, and not to just go to administration and say, well, these 20 positions, they're going to cost $5 million, fine us $5 million because we're sure it's there somewhere. So if we cannot offer a proposal that is explicit about where that cut comes from, then it's irresponsible for us to vote on amendment that doesn't do that. Ms. Anderson.
Mr. Eubanks, we're not talk, Dr. Eubanks, we're not talking about 20 positions. We're talking about seven. I don't know how you got to 20.
I'm sorry, but we still need to talk about that.
But we're talking about seven positions, and there are a couple of very important reasons why. If we fully finance the lowest performing schools in terms of their resources, then we can hold the schools accountable for the performance. You can't say, well, we didn't get enough money. We didn't get, we don't have appropriate faculty. We don't have the coaches, we don't have the specialists in place. Those arguments are down. So we have, we're going to focus on the kids who need it the most, and we're going to monitor their performance. And if we can get that done this year, some of the other things that I would love to see, I'd love to see more coaches in the next tier of low performing schools. But I can't get all of that, and we can't get all of that in one year. But what we can do is get at least one segment of the school population where our children are not performing well, to get them to perform better. And that's all we're asking for, seven new positions.
Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Chair Eubanks, and I want to thank the author of the motion, Dr. Anderson, for bringing this to the table. You know, some of the schools that you talked about are in the 7th District.
Yes.
And I truly appreciate you bringing this forward as a discussion amongst our colleagues here. And as the Chair of the Fab Committee, I'm looking to you for your leadership in helping answer a couple of questions that I have, because I want to support it. I do. And so I just wanted to know where in the, either you're adding to the budget, or you're trying to find somewhere, I know my colleague, Mr. Burrows, can help me with that as well, where in the budget? If you don't want to add to the 2.023 billion request, where in the budget that would come from?
Well, I think we could talk about that. First, we don't want to add it, because if we don't get it, that'll be the first thing cut. So we're not playing that game. We want it to be a part of the base budget. We want it to be a part of the budget. Now, where can we find it? We can find some fat in that budget to cover seven positions, there's no doubt in my mind.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and I yield back.
Ms. Williams.
Good evening. I just wanted to first thank the budget staff for all the work that they did. We worked hard together during this season. We really appreciate your work. And with, whenever there is, there is a time when there is some disagreement or two different goals being set, you have this kind of discussion, so I think it's healthy. I just wanted to clarify, wanted some clarity on the reading specialists. We have 23 currently, and I just wanted to confirm that in the budget currently, do we have 25 or just 23?
23.
23 positions?
As identified on here. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So there is a need for seven new positions, correct?
If that's what you deem necessary, yes.
Yes, and so although none of these schools that are listed, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Although none of these schools that are listed here are in my district, I still have to make a decision on all of the 127,000 students in our district. And being an engineer, I know the importance of math and how it can help you in any career that you choose. So this, I would, based on, based on the fact that we're going to have to do some balancing at a certain time, I'm all for adding the seven, but I'm also for just to increase the budget. We're going to have to balance this out at some point, so we're just talking the seven positions. I think they're needed.
Call the question.
Mr. Valentine.
Thank you. I, like many of you, see the benefit in supporting all of our students, not just the bottom 25, but all of our students. What about the 26th school? Or the 27th? Or the 28th? Or the 29th? Or the 30th? The 31st? And so when I think about, you know, this investment, I have a question for Dr. Maxwell, particularly around literacy in our schools, particularly in these 25 schools, but other schools. What are we currently doing to support students who are not reading on grade level in all of our schools? What impact has our emphasis on literacy through our strategic plan had on our students? What impact are you seeing this long-term on our graduation rate? As you're saying, the largest increases to our graduation rate particularly are happening with inside the Beltway. And then lastly, what is the impact of these coaches in other schools? Understanding that if we're going to invest, we want to make sure that we have the highest return on each investment that we have. So in particular, I'm curious about, you know, educating those who may have a difference in opinion on how we go about improving literacy in our county, what we're currently doing and what we're currently investing in literacy, please.
So I'm going to ask Dr. Joseph to respond to that question in a little more detail, but to say that, you know, you recall the board adopted our strategic plan last spring with a new, you know, realigned focus on literacy. I would also say that we just gave our baseline, our first census or whole school system assessment, the park assessments, and I think it's yielded some encouraging news in some areas for us, while at the same time reinforcing the need to do that work. I agree with your assessment that we have inadequate resources to really deal with all of the needs that we have, and the difference here in whether we're adding, you know, 23 or 27 or 25 makes a real difference financially, but understand that, you know, we have many things more than just these specialists or these reading teachers occurring in our schools, including things like the addition of pre-kindergarten and other kinds of things. But I'll ask Dr. Joseph to respond more thoroughly.
Sure. Good evening, board members. We have, remember in about September, the very first forum that we had, board forum we had, was on literacy. And at that time, we spoke with the board about our intentional focus on our literacy work, and we identified and shared with the board our five-year plan of identifying clear outcomes for our district to achieve specific targets. And we've talked about, you know, how the system was focusing our efforts on literacy across the board. So, you know, we're proud to say now, more than ever, in Prince George's County Public Schools, every single school, all 214 schools within our district, has a clear focus on literacy. They have been intentionally focused on moving the needle forward for all of our children within the district. We have the six literacy specialists that we added in this year's budget, and what we said was, you know, it's important for us to monitor as we put investments in to make sure that those investments are working, before we put lots of money into people without making sure that those people are bringing about the results. So we shared that we added six this year, we put 20 in for the budget next year. We said we were going to evaluate the performance of what was happening with the six literacy specialists that were in the district this year, and we're currently in the process of investigating that. But when you ask, do we need more? I mean, we feel confident this current budget adequately appropriates for the needs that we currently have. I mean, within our, within our schools, what we've changed this year and what the literacy plan specifically talked about was the targeted training that all staff are receiving in specific literacy instruction. We've made sure that we've looked at the reading interventions, so within schools, to make sure that students have appropriate programming based upon the various levels of reading performance that we have within our buildings. I mean, there is a lot of work that needs to happen, and one of the things we were concerned about in terms of adding lots of additional staff into this current budget is, you know, when we added, when we add the staff, we have to also add provisions to train those individuals, because putting a person in a position, like a literacy position, without providing them the adequate training and support, won't get the results that we need. So we have to be able to build the capacity to do that. And that was one of the considerations that we had as we thought about, you know, how many, how many positions do we add over the course of the years? Because we have to add the additional capacity as well. And that was a concern for us as we think about how to do this well. You know, one of the things we wanted to make sure of was that we just don't want to put positions in without providing the supports, training, necessary for those positions to be impactful. So we do feel that this current budget request is appropriate, and we feel like we have the capacity to support the additional supports that we put in now. But we're concerned if we move too fast without the additional supports, we'll just have people, but those people won't have the skills to get the additional results that we need. So we have to be mindful. And one of the things Dr. Maxwell was clear about, and one of the things that the board had asked of us, was to make sure any, any new investments that we put in, we monitor, and we can give, you know, we can talk about the outcome. How do we know it's effective when we're putting in, you know, these costly endeavors? So we've been mindful about that. And every new, last year, all of the new programs that we put in, we have a plan to evaluate and monitor them.
Thank you, Dr. Joseph. I would just say, I don't recommend us increasing the budget from where we are now. I think the county spoke loud and clear last year about how we spend our money, about any increase to the budget and the impact it would have. I understand that we are making very difficult choices, just like families do when they make decisions about budgeting for their families, and that, thank you for your presentation, but it's a very tough decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cantaro's Grady.
I thank my colleagues for, you know, bringing this option. However, when we were discussing this process just a little bit ago, my understanding was that we were going to discuss priorities as we thought, have a discussion among ourselves, not just surprise us and sort of bring in seven positions without having a discussion with the rest of your colleagues. I find that to be a little bit disappointing, because I know how the budget worked last year. When we didn't get the amount that we wanted, we found, I found myself feeling really upset that we couldn't fund those things, and here we were, just sort of like fussing with each other about what priorities were, because some of us wanted more kindergarten readiness, some of us wanted more literacy coaches, some of us thought different things. And so I just would want an opportunity to have that discussion once we know what the budget, how the budget works out. We move any of those positions, we know it shifts, and it's just, you know, I'm just a little bit, like I said, disappointed.
Ms. Jacobs.
Well, I actually wasn't going to speak to this motion. I was just going to vote in favor of what Dr. Anderson proposed. But actually, I will speak to it, because the reality is, the Board of Education does not, the staff that the Board of Education has is administrative-level staff, and it's set up a certain way. It's set up so that the superintendent, CEO, and staff have the responsibility to create a budget and present it to the Board of Education. And so it's really not the board's function to go digging in and trying to figure out where it's supposed to be. We're supposed to say, these are the priorities, and then you can make proposals as to how the board's budget can be funded. But what I would say is this. The reality is, last year, we proposed a budget that was far above what maintenance of effort was, and this year, the budget that's being proposed is far above what maintenance of effort is. And so no matter what happens, when the budget goes over to the fifth floor and then to the county council, they're going to approve a certain amount of money, period. And every year, this year, just like every other year in the budget, it comes back to the board, and you have to reconcile it. Reconciliation means that you have to look at what pot of money you have, and then how are you going to best spend it. And so I think to the, I think when you have a process where the board or where a member is, you know, sort of criticized for presenting in the board's budget what they believe to be necessary, that's why you have a motion and a second and a vote. And so if in fact it's not the pleasure of the board to support the motion, then it won't be voted in favor of. But I just think, you know, we can't continue to quell a process that's supposed to be teamwork, that's supposed to be consensus building. And so consensus building means, consensus building means that we're supposed to work together as a team and not try to quell or quiet people down from when they're trying to do what's right for kids.
Thank you. Ms. Boston.
First, I want to thank your team, the budget team, for the work that they did on this budget. I think you did an excellent job this year of listening to the board, getting our input early, early in the process, and putting a lot of the things that this board, as a board, had proposed to you, and you found a way to add that to the budget. I kind of feel the way that Ms. Grady feel, that I feel that... I kind of feel the way that Ms. Grady feel, that I feel that this was thrown on us and it wasn't, it was not shared with the whole Board. It's not that I don't agree that we need these resources for our students, but I feel that we have the experts here that know what we need to be, that know what we need, and they know how to utilize what they have. We have people in there, in the budget this time, to do those resources. And I'm sure Dr. Joseph know how to spread those resources around to make sure all our schools are, can benefit from that. I just feel that to add a budget, like Ms. Jacobs have already said, we have a budget that's already very high, and to add more revenue to that budget, that's sitting into somewhere that know when it come back, it's going to be cut, it's going to be cut. So, you know, let's reality check in. But I'm not in support of this based on the fact that it was actually thrown on us without giving the Board as a whole to debate it and to talk about it. This is the first I heard of it. Thank you.
Excuse me, can we please, we just said we're going to have respectful dialogue. Let's continue to have a healthy debate. I appreciate everyone's emotion, but let's respect each one of the speakers. Thank you. We have Ms. Perry.
I respect the administration. I'm a student, as, I'm not sure if everyone in the audience knows, I go to Oxon Hill High School. Thanks. But, and I respect all the opinions of everyone on this Board and the administration, everybody in the audience. And I understand, sorry, I'm kind of, you know, everything's kind of gotten me flustered. But I understand that we need, we need to allocate funds appropriately and in a timely manner. Okay? So, to your point, Dr. Joseph, it will take money and it will take time to train people, right? We want to say seven new positions. Whether that is, I don't know how spread apart the 25 different schools that are at the lowest part of our, I guess, academic standing is within this county, whether we can train all these people in the same room, whether we can find some way to make this efficient. But I personally know what it feels like to be in a classroom where you're not, well, I've been in, I've been fortunate enough to be in talented and gifted programs since I started here. But I know what it feels like to go to schools and talk with students, and they can't read, and they're in the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. So, I understand this was put on, like I said, I respect all of your opinions. I know this may have been rushed, but you lose a year. Every year, you do not approve something within budget. A third grader right now and a fourth grader right now is losing a crucial year, which is set up through Common Core because you know there's a set curriculum structure for each year. You're going to be losing a year every time that we weigh on things like this. And I'm, I just can't, I can't sit back and watch any more students, especially at some schools that are underserved, and a lot of their points were valid. There is, there is an inequality between different parts of this county. I'm so sorry. I don't want to say this publicly, but it is so true because I've seen it. It's so true. So please, I urge you all to vote in favor of this motion.
Thank you. Moving on to round two, we have Eubanks, Burrows, Anderson, Cantero, Grady, and Epps on round two. And I, you know, could not agree more about the need for this work. There is no question. Look, ladies and gentlemen, we have a budget that we currently have that doesn't meet the needs of the system. It's clear. Someone said earlier that we spend more in our per student than other counties, simply not true. We spend significantly less per student in this county than any of our surrounding jurisdictions. If we want to reach the greatness that each and every one of this person in the room wants to achieve, we need significantly more resources than what we have today. So we're going to, we're going to vote on, and hopefully pass very soon, a budget of over $2 billion. The idea that we would get that budget, and this is where my colleague Ms. Jacobs talked about, we're going to ask our county council to make some tough choices about funding our schools. And we will see what happens when we make that decision. But right now, and what's coming before us now, is an idea that we would add needed positions. They are needed. There is absolutely no doubt that they are needed. But in return for what? Dr. Maxwell, could you tell us now what you would cut to balance the budget with these positions?
I can't tell you right now. I just, just hearing the proposal myself tonight.
So, ladies and gentlemen, this is what I want everyone to understand. If we pass this motion, we will recess, they're going to go back and cut something out the budget. And then, please, please, and then we're going to come back and we're going to decide whether what they cut is better or worse than what they added. We don't know the answer to that question. So I'm not going to vote on something that, you know, you're going to tell me, I'm going to pay extra on my electric bill today, but I don't know whether or not I'm going to pay for my gas bill. It don't add up. So until or unless we have some more information, I just don't think it is responsible for us to pass something that is unknown. Now, once again, when this is all said, and I just disagree with Ms. Jacobs, that it's not our responsibility to worry about that. I think it is. But I would, I would remind my colleagues that, again, what's important at the end of the day is that we pass the budget, and that's going to be key. And then we're going to have a lot more work to do once the county executive and county council go through theirs. All right. Next up is Mr. Burrows.
Thank you. First, I want to say, Dr. Anderson, I apologize for what's being said because for months, you've been very clear to all of us about the need to increase, in writing and in committee. We were just in committee. You were in committee, I was in committee, Sagun, you were in committee. This is not a surprise. And for those, for the members who are not on the Budget, Finance, Audit Committee, I say this. We can say here today, because I didn't know about these seven positions a day before or two days before, that these kids are not going to get the services that they need. It just makes no sense. And as far as where to cut, I have some suggestions. We can cut the entire, we can cut four FTEs out of the Chief of School Health Policy Service and Innovation, that whole department. We can completely eliminate the Chief Strategic External Affairs Department. We can take four FTEs out of the Chief of Staff Department. We can take four FTEs out of the Communications Department. It amazes me that whenever we want to add a new chief or a new executive, we always have money. But when we are trying to add seven FTEs, when we're trying to add seven FTEs so that our students are proficient in math and reading, we don't have enough money. Also, last year, we approved, not me, but the Board approved a budget that required, and the county executive asked the people for a 15.6% tax increase. And what we said, those of us who opposed it, what are you doing with the money that we have now? And the truth is, we're creating more positions up here in central office. This shouldn't even be a debate. Why are we debating literacy and mathematic proficiency for students? It makes no sense. There's only seven FTEs. And that's likewise with closing Forestville and Skyline, $2 million out of a $2 billion budget. It makes no sense. And so, Dr. Anderson, I want to apologize because you have repeated the same thing. You have sent a million emails to the Budget Office. You have held hearings and meetings. We just left a meeting. And Dr. Maxwell, maybe this is your first time hearing it, but your staff was there. They were all there, okay? Dr. Anderson, Dr. Anderson, I urge all of my colleagues, the price is way too high. Because if students are not proficient in math and in English, it is a life-to-death decision. They're not going to make it. And we need to, I know we receive a lot of pressure to keep certain people happy, but we got to say, forget that and do what's in the best interest of the kids. And I ask that we approve this budget, well, oppose the budget and approve the amendment.
Dr. Anderson.
Well, Mr. Burrows made several of the points I wanted to make, but there's just one that he didn't make. And thank you so much for your comments, Mr. Burrows. The budget is a value statement. It tells everybody what we believe in. Now, it is true that the budget is not addressing the needs of all of our students, and that is the reason that there are things called priorities. Now, this Board said to the administration that our two top priorities were literacy and universal pre-K. And I want everybody to know, my recommendation regarding literacy was far more than what I'm suggesting tonight. I am trying to compromise. Sir, Mr. John, you know that my recommendation was far greater than what's in the budget, what I'm proposing tonight. It doesn't make sense to me to stonewall when we're talking about getting our kids prepared for school and to be successful in school. But that appears to be what it is. Now, if we set the priorities and say that those are the top two priorities, well, everything under that is less important. So you cut from what's under that. So you can take care of literacy so our children can read and do arithmetic, numeracy, and you take care of the other matter, pre-K, which you have attempted, and we'll talk about that later, where, because 34% of our kids come here not ready for kindergarten. That's where the gap starts. But we're looking way up here. No, let's look here. Let's handle that problem, eliminate the gaps, and we'll see more successful kids in the pipeline in Prince George's County.
Ms. Cantero's Grady.
I was going to say, I keep hearing this discrepancy about the North and the other sites of the county, and it is not true. No, it's not. No, it's not. And I ask that you respect what I have to say because it is not true. Those schools are all overcrowded. It is all overcrowded. And let me tell you, I don't talk about what I do in my regular job, but what I do and what I bring to the table, and I'm working my butt off as a Board member to look at the needs in Title I schools, leveraging, bringing grants so that other, so that kids that are scoring one and two can get assistance, whether they're Latino or black or whatever they are, as long as the need is there. All I'm saying is that we have, we have had a commitment and understanding in this process just a little bit ago, that we would look at priorities together. I believe that's what I understood. Some of you that are saying that you were out, you were back there, you weren't even back there when we had the discussion. So what I'm saying is this, I am all for literacy. I am all for supporting students and getting them where they need to be. But I do like transparency, at least with my colleagues, and understanding that I have read those notes. But my understanding was that we would together look at priorities. That's all I'm saying. And that does not make me not want to support literacy. So I want to be clear about that.
Thank you, Ms. Epps. Please, ladies and gentlemen, please. We're going to, we're going to have to keep a little bit of control. Excuse me, right here, too. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Epps.
I just want to clarify, the motion is not to add to this budget. The motion is to do exactly what everybody in here has to do month to month, and that's make hard decisions about where you're going to spend the money that you got. It's $2.2 billion. I mean, and we're talking about seven positions, whether, you know, you heard it in the back or not, we're talking about seven positions for a $2.2 billion budget. After it leaves here, it goes to the county executive and then it goes to the county council. Everybody, you know, when I, when I got into this and things like that, the first thing that people will do is compare Prince George's County to Montgomery County. Anybody ever been down to 270 Corridor? 270 Corridor is a billion dollars in business tax money up and down that corridor, biotech, biochem, bio. There's none of that in Prince George's, okay? But the fact of the matter is, is that this goes well beyond us. And as many of you are here right now, we're going to need you to come back in June for the budget reconciliation. We're going to need you to go to the fifth floor or go to the county office building when the budget is taken up by County Executive Baker and by the county council. Because at the end of the day, that's how this budget is funded, okay? And without you, in taking the stand, our priorities come from you. I get the emails, okay? And so, and I get emails from all over the county. I represent District One, but I get emails from everywhere. And I got all the emails about Skyline, and I got all the emails about Forestville and about Friendly High School and every other high school in this county. And it's, and to sit here, year after year after year, and by the way, my name will not be on the ballot moving forward. Because it just doesn't make any sense that, you know, first it was about who had degrees. Now everybody up here has degrees, and, you know, we still can't get it done. Do we need 2.2? We need 2.4. But the bottom line is, even when you get to 2.4, how are you going to spend it? What I'm saying is, get the seven positions, and if you don't, if you can't go out or you can't go on vacation that year, so be it.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind my colleagues, it feels like deja vu. Because last year, I actually took the other route. I asked specifically, because it was told to me, we had to identify where you wanted to see a change. And so I asked, how much would it cost to add 10 additional pre-K sites? I was told that the cost was $1.3 million, mind you, in a $2 billion budget, and it was still voted down. And so what I'm saying is, at some point in time, it's true, we have to look at what our priorities are. The Board does not vote at all on executive-level positions. We have no authority on executive-level positions. So that means, whatever hiring happens or salaries that are set on executive-level positions, they happen without Board approval. So all I'm saying now is, we then were left. It specifically says that the Board's responsibility is the budget and parental engagement. That's what those seven positions do. And so, we can keep talking about it, or we can go ahead and vote on it and see where it lies. And I would just say this, I had no idea the specifics of which positions or what Dr. Anderson was going to say, but I do know it's the right thing to do. Call for the question.
Did you call the question?
I did.
I don't know if my button is lit up.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let me explain the parliamentary procedure, everyone, it's okay. The question has been called by our bylaws and standing rules. It means the people remaining on my list will speak, and that is Ms. Williams and Ms. Boston. Ms. Williams, did you, and I'm sorry, Ms. Hernandez. Ms. Williams and Ms. Hernandez were lit up before the question was called.
I just wanted to put this in perspective. A couple meetings ago, there was a question that came up about the cost of positions. And from what I understood, it took about $1 million to get us, I wrote down, 12 to 13 positions. If we're talking about seven, so we're talking about $500,000. And then to give them training, let's put it back up to a million. So I'm saying, we're talking about $1 million. Now, when we send our budget to the county exec, we already know that we're not going to get what we, what we want. We already know that. And so when we talked about, when we send something forward, what I have always been taught, if I know I need to negotiate something, I'm going to go out there with as much as I need as possible so I can cut. And so, I want to be prepared to cut what we need to cut, but I need to put what I want in the budget first. So, when we, when we talked about the procedure in the back, we were talking about when we come back from, when we get our budget back, we will prioritize those things and then we'll look at that list. But if I had, if I do not have enough in the budget, then we're not going to be able to, we're going to be cutting us to the bone. So I just want to say, let's put enough in the budget and then we'll be able to have something to cut. Let's put our priorities out there and make sure everyone knows, because this literally is a symbolic representation. That's what this is. We know we're not going to get what we want. And so, I ask the audience that, you hear us talking about our priorities, and so, there is going to be some sacrifice that everyone has to make. And so, when the county exec and the county council come and say, this is how we're going to do it, now you know why. All we do is... All we do is say how we're going to spend the money. We send that forward, the county exec says how he's going to get the money. He's going to come to the audience and the citizens, including myself, and say, I need you to put a little more in the pot, or I need to cut some other county service. So, when he comes to you, you will be able to talk to your neighbors to say, this Board had a long discussion about literacy, about early childhood education, because we're looking to improve our system. I know we're going to have to cut. This agenda item, this item may be on that cut list. I don't know what our Board is going to come back and say, what is a priority or not. But I think that it's important enough for us to put our, our priorities out there. And I truly apologize to the budget group. If you want, I'll bring you donuts and coffee, so that, you know, to help you with the work, because I know it's additional work to have to go and do this. But I do appreciate your support, but we are trying to make a symbolic representation of what we would like to have.
Thank you. Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. You know, I've, I commend Dr. Anderson and her leadership with the Fab Committee. I've, I'm a part of that committee, and I'm aware of what's been going on. We've been there. I've learned so much about the budget that I didn't even know existed about the budget. With that said, in our conversations, we keep, it wasn't presented as if it was going to be an arbitrary number, or not an arbitrary number, but rather, that there wasn't going to be a, any decision, or like a delineated line that we were going to cut off. So, my consternation really is, I'm afraid of what we, because we never talked about exec cab positions to be cut. We never talked about that. We actually talked about, you know, things that we need, like English language learning, which, to me, caused me stressed every night, because, and I join my colleague, Ms. Grady, in that there is a difference between the North and the South. We are, we are different in what the needs are. And to be quite frank, I know this because I am a product of the North, Thomas Stone Elementary, Hyattsville Middle, Eleanor Roosevelt, and I know what it's like to be a child that's in need, not necessarily the same needs, but a child that's in need of, of school resources. And I'm afraid of what, the reality is, we're probably going to lose something that we really need for these kids, and I am scared to take that risk with that. So, I guess I just wanted to state my position before, or my decision making before we make any vote. It's, it's tough, it really is. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you, colleagues, for that lively debate, and we're all just doing the best we can for the students, so let's vote on this amendment. Let's call the roll again. Please repeat the motion for us.
Motion to add two additional reading specialists and five additional math specialists to the 25 lowest performing schools. Dr. Anderson. Mr. Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Epps.
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks. Ms. Hernandez.
No.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Ms. Quinteros, Grady.
No.
Ms. Roche.
No.
Mr. Valentine.
No.
Mr. Wallace.
For District Seven Schools, yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Boston.
No.
Dr. Eubanks. Six ayes? Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Ms. Eubanks. Seven ayes?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, that motion passed, don't mention passes. So, wonderful, we're going to-
Sir, sir, sir.
Motion receives seven votes, it does not pass. It needs nine votes.
No, budget, the budget only requires a simple majority. It doesn't require two-thirds for, for the budget. The budget is deperative of the Board of Education, so it only requires a majority vote on, on the budget.
That's the rule of the chair. I read Section 4-403, they differ like-
So, we're going to do this. I'm going to, I'm going to tentatively conclude that that motion passes. Either way, we're going to recess. We will recess. The, 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 ladies and gentlemen of the Board, I'm hoping each and every one of us stays.
Are there any more amendments?
We will recess for at least 30, I, I don't know, it's, do you have a timeline for us? We'll let, we'll let you know when we're done with the calculations. So, we will recess, in the meantime, if we need to come back because we have a clearer understanding of, of, of the, of the debate. But my understanding of, of the law is, under the budget, it's a simple majority vote.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question, please? It's just a question.